You can start whenever. So first, we'll go through the special board meeting and then we'll move into the work session. All right, so at six oh five, I called the meeting to order. And so looking at tonight's agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, and so our items for discussion is beginning with the negotiation of superintendent's contract with Dr. Robert M. Powell. And so the-
Do you have to take attendance?
Oh, yes. See, I'm so, I'm so used to Board Book and it doesn't say attendance, so I just skipped over it. Go ahead.
Becky Bysel. Becky.
Present.
Brian Davis. Dave Pembel.
President.
Kelsey Waits.
Here.
Lisa Hadine.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Stephanie Mom, present. Sorry, I went out of order.
I'm present as well. So I guess it's just that night for all of us. That's fine. All right, so items for discussion, beginning with the negotiation of the superintendent's contract. And so the admin negotiations committee met on Friday and also on Saturday to work through this. And so I know that the contract was sent out to everyone. And if you have any questions, Scott or Stephanie or I would be happy to discuss them. Okay, no questions from Lisa. Dave, do you have any question?
I'd take a motion to approve.
Second.
Right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we should do a roll call. We need to do a roll call.
Yep. Becky Bysel.
Yes.
Brian Davis.
Yep.
Lisa Hadine.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Stephanie Mom, yes. Dave Pembel.
Yes.
Kelsey Waits.
Yes. All right, and next we need to discuss the next steps in the hiring process. So Bob did reach out to me yesterday and we had a talk. And next week, he's intending to call each of the board members to just get to know you a little bit quick, five to 10 minute phone call. But what we need to discuss is what time we would like to start the transition, especially since with COVID-19. We may have to have a little more transition time if we're going to need to do any sort of more teacher professional developments during the summer. If they haven't been able to do those or anything like that. And so it's, it's really, you know, how do we want to move forward with this? And otherwise, I can just reach out to MSBA and see if they have any guidance. That's about it. I know we had originally talked and said about two weeks. I think when is what we said in the fall, just a couple of weeks for turnover. But if we're seeing because of the pandemic that we need more time than that, then it's something to think about.
I think, just one point, I think it might be worthwhile to maybe have it be staggered. Because we'll have school in session and school out of session. So if you go with a straight two weeks, school would be out of session and they're, not everybody may be available. Due to, you know, hopefully by that time, people taking vacations, et cetera. So just something to think about.
So is the transition time to get to know people? Is it a, is it a meet and greet? I think, you know, whatever MSBA says is probably fine. I, I think if you want to meet people, it's going to have to be some calls now and some then onsite starting in the summer.
Yeah, and, and it'll be to get him up to date on what the district is currently working on. So that when he gets here, he already knows kind of what's happening, what the first questions are going to be, what the first projects are going to be. And I know Tim has also reached out to him already and said that he would also be willing to meet with him and give him whatever information he can. And all of that.
I don't feel well enough informed to pick a time. I, I'm sure if MSBA has a recommendation or, or if Bob, is he recently transitioned into his previous job? Just five years ago has a sense of it. I'm comfortable. And I presume it's either pay, you know, it's he's either doing it out of the professional goodness of his heart or we end up on a daily pay.
Okay.
On that, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other about that.
Okay, then I'll just start doing some phone calls on my end and see what works. And next month, I'll give you an update on how we might go about doing. Or an update sooner if MSBA thinks we need to start something sooner. Okay. All right. And so at that point, that's all for our special meeting. So there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a roll call.
Becky Bysel.
Yes.
Dave, Brian Davis.
Yes.
Lisa Hadine.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Stephanie Mom. Oh, yes. I am, I went to work at six this morning. I am exhausted.
It was so hard to decide. Am I in favor? Am I not in favor?
That's, that's my favorite, favorite bloop tonight so far.
Dave Pembel.
Yes.
And Kelsey Waits.
Yeah, yes. All right, um, so we'll go into the work session now. And since this isn't usually televised and there is not a lot of public that usually comes to them in person. I just thought I'd let people know that this is a much more informal meeting. We don't do formal votes. We don't really do anything formal. It's more discussion based, trying to talk about the issues that are there, getting the school board updates on things that are going on throughout the district and such. All right, so we have a number of things to talk about tonight. And I'm just pulling up the agenda. So the first item for discussion is the solar garden update. So who is taking that? I thought I saw Renee Sola on here. I'm very excited to hear this.
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Thanks. Not sure how, how I should forward. I should be on your meeting. Yeah, I just, high level, I'm not sure who's new. Some faces look familiar. But we're in the last stage of the gardens' construction and energization. As a sort of brief reminder, the school district negotiated with myself, my company, Renee Sola. And you're participating on three separate gardens, just because of the size of the school. It required a lot of solar panels. So you're based, and because of the laws and the rules, you're basically a little bit under forty, the forty percent cap on two of those gardens. And then you're around thirty percent of the third garden. In essence, timeline wise, it, Excel Energy has established an energization date of early May. That first week of May is basically all three of them should happen. And because of how the timelines work out, it's basically, the garden will go live in one month. It will then be considered active the first day of the following month. So if it goes live early May, June first is the first active date. It then accumulates credits for all the subscribers over the course of June. And then in July, you would see your first bill credit and you get your first subscription invoice at the same time. And the school district did decide on a sort of guaranteed indexed rate where your subscription is less than the credit you receive by, I believe, a penny and a half. And on top of that, about ten to fifteen percent of the school's energy usage is actually at a quote unquote small, general subscriber rate, which is another couple cents above that. So the school district should basically start out with a fairly substantial savings every month through the last month. It doesn't increase, your savings won't increase like other subscribers who maybe went with a flat rate. But you will have that sort of locked in discount. And you're, should see that if nothing happens, and these days it's hard to say that nothing could change what seems to be very firm timelines. You should see that basically in July, everything will go live in May. And then because of the administrative backend, you'd see invoices and bill credits in July.
Eric, this is Dave Pembel. Can you refresh everybody and bring the other folks up to speed, the new folks on the board about the length of our commitment, our contract, I guess?
Yeah, so these are twenty-five year solar power plants with Excel. And you're, you're on sort of a, your solar structure is no longer how it, how it works. You are under a higher savings credits program that has been twilighted. So basically, all subscribers under that signed up for twenty-five years. There is a level of flexibility to move it to other subscribers or, you know, reassign it with some, you know, effort. But it's intended to be sort of like as if you put panels on your roof and let them run for the life of them. Except without all the hassle and all the upside. So typically, we see maybe, yeah, different terms on current subscriptions. But sort of current subscriptions are roughly a third of the savings that you're going to see. So it's definitely a different climate that I'm now in.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only other thing I might point out is, I know we discussed this a little bit early on. We typically do a ribbon cutting ceremony when the gardens go live. Naturally, that is not going to happen. But it is hoped that we can reschedule those as sort of just a general gathering, at least at one of the garden sites. Maybe this fall, which could, if the school is interested, align with something like a field trip. Or, you know, at least get folks on the board out there if they'd like to see it. And that sort of opportunity should exist. It's naturally delayed by what all is going on.
Yeah, that sounds great. I'm excited to see them. I, I love looking at all the solar gardens when we're driving, so. Very cool. Does anyone have any questions about the solar garden? No. All right. Well, thank you so much for coming on and giving us an update and kind of bringing the new board up to speed and letting us know where the project stands. We appreciate it.
Yeah, happy to do it. You do have a garden operator contact that Jen is, should have the contact information for. So anything going forward where I might be less, you know, on the day to day operations, she'll be able to help you guys, everyone. And I'm happy to try and help if I can.
All right, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, so we're going to move straight into activities. And now it's not listed on here, but we did get an email from Jeff about it, about also talking about tennis court usage and things like that. We'll start with Trent and talk about the status of the MSHF events, coaching, stipends, activities and refunds.
Yeah, Jeff, do you want me to take the lead on this or did you want to speak to it first?
Why don't you cover everything on the agenda, whatever you'd like to share and answer questions from the board? And then I'll follow up if there's any loose ends or if they have questions for me about recommendations that would be on the April twenty-second agenda.
Okay, sounds good. I think I've got a few moving parts. I'll maybe take this first one. I drafted a short note to Jeff and Mike and Cam Peterson about our outdoor athletic facilities at the high school. And appropriately, Jeff wanted me to, to allow you guys to weigh in on it. You know, we right now don't have any restrictions on that space. We are not directing or encouraging kids to come and run on the track or use our fields or play tennis. But at this point, we have not kicked anybody off either. You know, we're not patrolling it. You know, we can't fence it in, as it were, but yet we also haven't sent any kind of different message. As our stay at home order extends, and I think things are going to get tighter over the course of the next couple of weeks. My proposal to them was, or consideration was, I think that might be an appropriate next step. You know, we certainly can't control all of the potential users from the general community. But I think we could really influence our spring sport athletes and those kids that really are probably most interested in using it. We don't have a ton of use right now, but, you know, it was almost seventy degrees yesterday. And at one point, there's about thirty kids up inside the track. And we're of course trusting them and their families to abide by all the social distancing expectations, but we're not directly supervising them. So my proposal was to send a more aggressive message about, you know, closing our facilities. Just like we've, you know, closed our playgrounds. And United States Tennis Association has discouraged folks from playing recreational tennis on their courts and things like that. So it was an idea. I don't know if people had questions or thoughts, but that was one item in the list of things that I have.
Brian, you did.
Hi, Trent. Don't even know where to start with this one. First of all, let me say that based on the recommendations, I mean, USTA is giving the, obviously, I, other than putting out a aggressively worded note, I don't know what you can do about something like the track, for example, because the track is such an open space. But my question to you is, can you guys padlock that tennis court? Can the tennis court be locked? Those gates?
Uh, probably. And I only say probably because we've never tried, at least as far as I know. I know I've never tried. They're fenced, as you know.
Yes.
It's on two sides. I don't know about like the west and east sides where you kind of come in alongside the middle there. I can look into it.
The reason I'm asking is because you'd actually have to scale those fences. So we can only do so much, but I don't disagree with you. There's only so much we can do. If they want to scale a fence, it's got to be, that fence has got to be what, ten, fifteen feet high? If they want to scale a fence that high, well, then they're scaling a fence that high. I will say this though, Trent, have you circled back at all with the city? The reason I'm asking is because any efforts made by the school district, if they're not in concert with the city, are a waste of our time. Because yes, we have a good number of tennis courts, but so do they. And I actually did send a note to the city council, because they voted five to two to not remove the basketball rims at Wilson Park and Pioneer Park, which I think is a mistake, because they're kids and they're going to do what they're going to do. And if those rims aren't removed, then they're going to keep doing what they're going to do until those rims are removed. So my question to you, and this long drawn out question, is would you support the idea of removing rims from any ISD owned courts or controlled courts, I should say?
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't oppose it. As an old basketball coach, as you know, a lot of those rims did get used as much as I wish they would along the way anyway. I don't know if we have a ton of use, for example, at McAuliffe, occasional, but it's not a full court. You know, it's not like Wilson or some of those places that are going to attract a different group. But in short, yeah, I don't think that it would, working with the right vendor, it would be terribly difficult to take those off and put it back on at a later time. But I think your points well, well noted, where what can we control? And if those are some things that can discourage folks, and it's a matter of a small amount of labor, yeah, I would support it. And to answer your other question, I've not talked to Phil or anybody else at the city, but that's something I can easily do tomorrow.
All right, Scott.
If we do decide to move forward with restricting access to the tennis courts, could an additional step? If we're not able to padlock the, I, I don't know if that little opening swings or doesn't swing or if it can be closed, but can you just take down the nets?
Yeah. Yeah, that's an easy one.
I personally think we should do everything we can to try to discourage it. I've seen kids getting together all over town. And they'll, they'll all go to their families and then, I don't know. I feel like as elected officials and as leaders, we need to do what we can to work on protecting the community. And if that's going to keep some people from getting sick, then I think we need to do it. Lisa has her mic off.
Yeah, Stephanie just raised her hand. I'm, I think I got my hand up at the same time as Scott. I, um, I don't support making these closures right now, only because what we heard from Governor Walz today was, we didn't hear anything specific on use of open space from him. I know the city's put out a bunch of tweets today to try and drive down the practices at the basketball court. Which I think is specifically the one at Pioneer is, has been the most problematic. I'd like to see us stay in concert with the city of Hastings and if we're putting out information and statements around restricting group play and that kind of thing. I, I feel better about that alignment, that it's about behavior and not about use of the space. But again, I would be in concert with the city. And if in your conversations with them, Trent, they're making choices around closing roadside or they're making choices around taking down the rims, which is what they threatened in their tweets today. I feel we should be in concert with them, but I don't think, to Brian's point earlier, if we did it, it's just going to push people to a different place. And I, we are a community asset. This space is a community asset.
Right, well, Stephanie first and then he had her hand up.
Kelsey, you froze up.
Yeah, Kelsey, you're a robot.
Can you hear me? Because you're frozen.
Yes, now we can hear you. So I, I, I'm conflicted about closing, you know, the tracks. I can see, you know, the tennis courts, the, the big thing, like Lisa had said, it's about making sure that there is appropriate behavior. People are being responsible with social distancing. I, I did, I had to run into town yesterday, which is like the first time in a while. And a lot of people were breaking those rules, which is concerning. So I think we do need to send out a message, a strong message, that says, you know, we want to encourage people to get outside and, and exercise. But if they're not responsible, we have a responsibility to absolutely close it down. But, and, and then agreeing with, I think, most everybody too, that we need to line up with the city of Hastings too. So that our information isn't conflicting.
Okay, Becky first and then you, Brian.
Stephanie, basically just said what I was going to say. I agree with everybody, but I do feel we're very liable with all of our property and we need to, we can't be there to watch everybody twenty-four seven. And if we have to be a little bit stricter, I think we should. And I do agree that people should be able to go outside and exercise and enjoy the fresh air. But, and I do agree, if we close ours, they're going to move somewhere else. But I don't think that we should carry that liability, especially with what's projected to happen the next couple of weeks. Just as a healthcare professional, I just think that we should do what we can to really try and help with the social distancing. And if that means we close ours, yes, they'll move, but maybe the city will then see that this needs to be done as well. Just because everything's being extended and the numbers are going to change drastically in the next couple of weeks. So like I said, Stephanie basically said, I just want to make sure that we know that we're liable, because it's our properties.
Brian?
So just so you guys are all on, in the loop, I sent an email to the city council last night after they voted not to take the rims down, voicing my opposition to that in particular. In terms of the track, I agree there are certain degrees of things we have to do. Each day, I've been going out with hope for her driving, because she's a permit driver, trying to get her hours in. So we're just driving around. So I'm getting to see a lot. And I can tell you that the tennis courts, for the most part, if I see people in the same court, on the same side of a court, they seem to be families. So I don't know if the tennis is a problem as, and or our track in terms of people who space themselves. The reason I specifically focus on the basketball courts is because clearly, as you know, Trent, that's high contact. And I am seeing over a dozen young men at Wilson Park every single night. And they're basically thumbing their nose at it. I don't know how much time you guys spend on social media, but there's basically become this border war in town via social media over these courts and what happens with them. And I honestly am saying candidly that there could be some pressure on the city council right now to keep those rims up. Because there's families that want them up, but it's not a popularity contest. And I think in something like basketball in particular, that's so high contact, the sweat, the, I mean, everything we think about it. That's the one that worries me the most in terms of, of playing right now.
Scott.
On the, on the tennis, on the basketball courts, I, I, I absolutely agree with you, Brian. I, I would certainly hope that people would be more cautious than be out playing pickup basketball or whatever the case may be. I know when we go out, my wife is isolating so she can take care of her parents. And we are actually using two separate basketballs and socially distancing. And that's the problem with tennis, is that, okay, great, you know, it's early spring, the nets are up, you know, you're outrunner around. It's maybe, you know, not seventy like it was the other day. And you go up and wipe your nose and you grab the ball and away you go. So you're right, you know, proximity wise, certainly not as close, but. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I echo Brian's concerns that, and I know that Governor Walz didn't mention open spaces, but basketball, I mean, there's so much sweat. You're touching the ball, you're touching your face, you're bumping into each other, that that one seems high contact. And while I would like, I would like to align with the city. However, that doesn't necessarily mean the city has to lead our decision. We can be the first ones to make that decision. Oh, Brian says I didn't.
Yeah, you didn't freeze for us, Kelsey.
Okay. We'll keep an eye on it. Lisa, did you have your hand up?
I did, but Dave had his up first.
Okay, Dave.
Well, I can speak to a little bit more because of my ties to the city. But, you know, right now, I think whatever we do has to echo with what the city does. I, you know, they're going to put signs up if they haven't done them today. And I know that they're busy conversing back and forth on social media. But I think that, you know, we need to do something. We just need to do it in concert. And maybe it, it, it's a good idea that, you know, Kelsey, send a, a letter or an email to the mayor and council saying that, you know, we're thinking that we want to do this. And, you know, bring them into the picture and say, let's do this together and remove the nets and remove, you know, lock up the tennis courts if we can or whatever that can be done there to, to kind of discourage this. But, you know, the problem being is, and, and Brian kind of echoed it, the, the vote, you know, on Monday evening, you know, really didn't support doing anything more than just, you know, putting up the notices and trying to encourage folks to be socially distant. But, you know, I agree that we as a school board need to do more. But I think we need to tie in and get the city on the same page and we would do it, you know, and try and. But here comes the other problem. It, it's, you know, we have, I see kids in our neighborhood out and we have some small kids out just trying to shoot baskets. And, and they're just a family. And, you know, we got to try and encourage some activity there and not cut them off also. And so that, it's kind of like a, an issue that, you know, when families are out, we have to give them some kind of opportunity for activity. And I, I guess I'll leave it at that.
Um, so to circle back, I know today is just a work session, so it's a point of conversation. We're not going to, we're not going to take a vote. I think we need to look at activities that are specifically happening on our property. I, if we in fact have large, well, if we have groups, I'm going to say it large, if we have groups of people in playing basketball on our facilities and they're not appropriate, and this isn't about sitting out there and waiting and watching and seeing. We're going to start having maintenance staff out in our In our, um, outdoor spaces and they could just make an account of it and note it. And then we give that feedback, I'd like to see us. React to an actual situation, uh, to a situation at a different facility. But again, I would oppose putting out a strong statement saying we are closing our grounds. School grounds are closed, I think if we have an issue, if it's about. Um, basketball at McCullough, if it's about, we have, um, excessive, uh, large numbers of people. Out playing tennis at our courts, I think we react to that. And in reaction, we coordinate, we, we tell the city, we're reacting to the situation because it's happening on our property. And then I'd say between now and the twenty-second of April or when we get back together, Trent just stay in touch with both. Neighboring districts to see what people are having, hear what our staff is reporting is happening on our property and stay in touch with the city.
All right, Becky.
I completely respect that, I think that might be too late in two weeks, so I think maybe we should stand on top of it a little bit more. Um, they're projecting numbers to change even with the next few days to by next Monday. So I'm just saying maybe we should stay a little bit more on top of it and maybe just be more aware of it, not in, in two weeks.
Well, I'm just saying that we as a group are together in two weeks, but Trent, I assume is gonna go to work every day. And is gonna. And is gonna pay attention and if we need to take an action, I, I don't know that it needs board action for Trent to say. We've had three interactions with people on our basketball courts. And we're not making progress on that, so now I'm gonna do this thing, I mean, we don't ask that. You know, sort of those safety type questions, wait until they can come to a board meeting. But I think this is a temperature taking moment for Trent to hear what's happening. And, yeah, I'm not saying that we don't, we don't engage with it, but that we, Trent's taking the temperature of the group right now.
Trent.
Yeah, and my, my, I appreciate the dialogue, especially in terms of the bigger picture across the district, my primary purpose in proposing a communication was. To be real direct with our current spring sport kids that would otherwise be in season and, uh, in person or right now they can't. Uh, not that we don't, of course, have neighborhoods and families that want to go use. Playgrounds and, and single basketball hoops, but I know that at least from, uh. From our in district users, those high school. Spring athletes are the ones that are really itching the most and like yesterday when there was, you know, thirty, forty kids out there, it's, it's lacrosse players slinging the balls around. It's kids running on the track and, you know, an eight, nine lane track gets pretty small as soon as you put thirty bodies on it and. And then we even got kids coming to kick in soccer balls that play multi, you know, again, it's not, they're. They're well intended, but again, I think like Brian said in a different way, there's still fifteen and sixteen and trying to figure it out and there's nobody supervising them and. Um, so it's kind of two tiers, maybe one tier was, um, you know, communication just to our, our in-season kids. Hey, we, we, we want you active, but you know what, right now, we, we just can't have you on our, on, up here was one thought and then. If, if you wanted to take that further, of course, that's a lo, another layer, but.
So I think the res, my response to that on the face of it is if you don't want the, if you don't want the spring sport athletes getting together. Cause you know, they'll move down to. The ponding basin as soon as you tell them to get off the track. You need to have the coaches tell them that. They're in contact with their coaches on a weekly, if not more frequent basis and their coaches need to say. And I have not listened in at all on the baseball ones, but I know they've been going on, they need to say, this is my expectation. My expectation is your coaches, I will not see you, and I know they've talked about how the batting cages should be used. Which is if they're, if you like drive up and see another person there, you drive away. And that's regardless of where you're set up, I mean, that, that's been very expressly stated by the coach, so it's not like stand next to it and wait, it's like you drive away. And I would expect coaches to make that and if it's still across, you say, I never want to see, I never want to hear that more than. Two of you, get with one partner, something like that.
Yep, yeah, they've reinforced those social distancing expectations, uh, multiple times, um. But like you said, the reality is when we're not patrolling it, um, you know, kids will do what they, what they choose to do and so it was a thought if, if.
But if we're not gonna patrol, we're not gonna patrol it after we put a statement out either.
True.
Right, but if the coaches have already told kids that, then I'm not sure what good a statement is going to do. If the coaches have already expressed that to students and you're finding thirty to forty of them on the track, I'm not sure that another statement. Is going to have a stronger impact than the one you currently have.
Yeah, I think to be clear that what we, what we have not told them is you're not allowed to come up here and use our facilities. Uh, so, um, we, we haven't directed them or encouraged them to use them, but we haven't told them not to. We've just said, we really need you guys to use. And follow, uh, all the good discipline that's required in the governor's orders about stay at home and social distance, you know, that's the message that's been sent. Uh, but you know, if I'm sixteen, what I hear is, oh, I can still use the tennis court then, okay, yep, but I'll follow the rules, but. You know, I think that you just get that social dynamic, so.
I'd be curious to know what's, what other people are getting, like how South Wash is approaching it or how Will's mom's approaching it, I mean, every, all schools own a lot of facilities.
Most of the schools in our conference have closed their outdoor facilities, uh, I didn't take a complete roll call, but we're on twice a week and. Now some of them, um, are a little bit smaller, you know, geographically and are, are more protected and therefore can literally lock a gate. Around five fields and it's a lot easier, others, it's much tougher, um, I can't speak to South Wash, they're not on our conference calls, of course, but, um. You know, Mottamidai, for example, they use their, their, uh, evening security to drive their campus and make sure that everyone's, you know, off it, that's, and they're kind of on one end of the extreme, I think, but. And then, of course, you have schools like one ninety-six, their, their entire district buildings are closed twenty-four, seven and they've extended that to their grounds because the city of Apple Valley. Has closed all their outdoor fields, so I think I do feel like folks around us are being more assertive and proactive for whatever that's worth. We are a little bit more geographically separated and wide open, so that gives us a little bit of a different challenge, but, uh, we're in the minority, I would say in terms of. Not, um, closing, whatever that, whatever that could look like.
All right, and Brian, you had a comment.
Yeah, um, so, just correct me if I'm, if I'm understanding this, I'm per Lisa, um, specifically. So Trent, it sounds to me, and somebody please jump in, I'm wrong, it sounds to me like you actually have the bandwidth. To close those fields or, or whatever space you feel needs to be closed, the only, which is great and. I have no problem with the approach you're taking, especially if we're behind the curve with all of our neighbors. Um, the only thing I would say is that for sure, we've got to get the city. In concert with us, yes, it'll allow us to leave this point again earlier, that it'll allow us to move down the road toward the right solution, without the city. Accompanying us, us in this, we are gonna just, like you said before, they're just gonna move somewhere else. But I do think because they are teenagers and because they're gonna do what they want to do and let's be honest, not all adults are as responsible as we are. I mean, there was a twenty-person party next door last night, um. We do need to put in some steps to make sure that there's just nothing there from the use, be it a tennis net, be it a basketball room. If it's not there, it, they can't use it.
Jeff.
Okay, um, so. The common theme that we're gonna have tonight is. We have our second executive order as it pertains to education that expires on April thirtieth. My thought is they're working on the guidelines for the next executive order, they did a very good job of having guidelines in place before they made the first one. And so I think we can anticipate very soon that we're gonna get guidance on whether there is any hope of opening the schools back up. Or having a shortened season for sports, um, that hope is pretty dim right now, but it's still a, an option. And I think it's very difficult to tell somebody that they may have a shortened track season or they may have a shortened tennis season. And, um, they can't do anything to get ready for that shortened season. Um, so, so my recommendation would be to wait till we get the next executive order. And react just like we've done with playgrounds, if the city moves first or if we feel we need to influence the city because. Playground is a good example where people who go to playgrounds do not evaluate whether it's a school district playground or a city playground. They just want to go to the nearest playground, so when the city closed their playgrounds to li, align with them, we closed ours. But we are operating Pinecrest during childcare hours. And it is marked off and taped caution and, and has signage that says it's closed, except for childcare. And the only reason we're doing, keeping it open for childcare is one, it's on a strict, um, cleaning regimen and two. You know, we have to consider those kids who are spending long days at childcare distance and not getting the, the things, the basic human needs. That they need for contact and, and socialization, to not let them. Play on a playground or anything makes it a really difficult place, a real negative place for them to come to. Um, but if we get a directive that says close down playgrounds, that one gets closed down too, so. So, you know, working with the city, whether we lead or we follow, the communication I think is, um, appropriate on a day-to-day basis. I think monitoring, I, I have not seen basketball groups playing on our school grounds, doesn't mean they're not, I haven't seen them, I've seen them all over the city parks. Every time I'm out in town, so, um, you know, and I've seen tennis players. Whether that's a safe activity or not right now, if there are specific guidance, obviously we'd close them down, otherwise I'd be willing to just follow along with, um. Um, you know, keeping tennis in a track and things like that open and dealing with. Yeah, thirty people are out there once, we, we will have to go out there and talk to the, those people, whether they're community members or students. Um, so I guess what we're looking for is, is any direction that Trent should put out there to coaches. Um, right now, um, we don't need a board vote on this ever, um, we can act in real time. The, you know, but the board acting, whether it's giving feedback today or actually taking a vote, is just to, just to show the community that you're all. You're all in agreement on whatever action we take, so, so, so right now we have that wait and see, uh, approach. With what the governor's gonna say next and what the advisement would be from Minnesota State High School League. But if you want to change that, if, if, you know, if we hear consensus tonight, we could put something else into action, otherwise I think we're gonna get something concrete to follow. Pretty quickly. I'll leave it at that for now.
Brian.
Thanks for that, Jeff, I, I appreciate it, the only concern I have is, I don't, I don't know if you have a feel for when that next order is coming and to Becky's point. If I was understanding her correctly, every single twenty-four hour increment that goes by. Is another opportunity for there to be a problem, depending on how long that takes, so that next executive order, for example, is Monday, for example. Well, that's still five days away, so that's five extra days where we've had significant contact in our town. That could be carried to someone, so I don't know when that next order is coming, but that would be my concern is just timing.
And just to reinforce, we, we can, we can take action tomorrow morning, um, we, we just. We're bringing it to you to, to see where you feel about it, should we react day by day, I anticipate next week after the holiday is over. Is when we'll get the next executive order, but we can react, um, day by day. If there's a strong message tonight, please share that with us and we will, we will take it to heart.
Becky, your hand went up there for a second.
Yeah, I just, I like that where if we monitor it and we see that there's a lot of activity, I think we give Trent and Jeff, um. Okay, so we're shutting it down, um, we don't want to see, I mean, these numbers, they're projected to go up in the next week to next three weeks, so. If we see him. See a lot of activity in our schools, you have the right just to say, hey, you know, let's take the lead over the city and just say. Our property is off limits right now, other schools are doing it and I get it that people want to go out and do things, but there's other places to do it. And with your families in your own homes, there's, be, be creative, I mean, my family's being creative, so I just think right now to be safe. Um, take a day-to-day, monitor the levels of activity there and I get the playground things and they finally were closed, but parents were monitoring their kids. These are teenagers that were, parents are probably working or not as mindful of everything, um. So when I'm not, I'm, my husband and I are working and my kids are off riding bikes and I've given them strict orders, but I have no idea what they're doing, they have their hand sanitizer. I don't know what they're doing when I'm not around with them, so I can see teenagers getting together and getting excited to see with their friends, so I say. You guys take the lead on it when you, what, what's monitoring it and if we need to close, do it.
I agree, Lisa.
Uh, I agree with Becky's statement, I also think if we want to make, I think there might be consensus to. This is the group, the board group to put a note out tomorrow, put it out to coaches and, and spring athletes and say, hey, we noticed this. This is causing us concern and it's not appropriate. We are. We are monitoring the use of our facilities and if, and this doesn't need just have to even go to, to spring sport athletes, but. Tell the community, we're monitoring our facilities and if they're not used in accordance with the guidance from Governor Walz. And the CDC, we will close them. I definitely hear consensus around that issue amongst the group tonight.
Yep, I think so. Okay, do we have any more discussion on that, otherwise kind of leaving it in your court? All right, and so then we can talk about, um, Minnesota State High School League events, coaching statements, oh, Dave.
All of that's fine, I, I think Lisa put it much tied it together, I just wanted to make sure that. You know, Trent has the understanding that he has some leeway here to move. And, uh, you know, you've, Trent, you've heard what we've had to say this evening and, and so. I don't know, take that under advisement. And, uh, we'll revisit this as we need moving forward and I think it's probably gonna be relatively soon.
All right, so Trent, do you want to move on to the next bit there?
Yeah, but I think the next two items, uh, fit together and they're underneath the umbrella, um, for tonight in terms of participation fees. At the last or one of the last work sessions, the last one I was at, uh, you had tasked me to provide options for kind of a, a tiered. Or, um, a different approach to our participation fee, so I did want to get back to you in a timely fashion and provide that. Uh, not that there's, that's an emergency, but I know it was a. An extension of that discussion, so that is, um, there was probably three different attachments that Jeff, I think, had provided to you, uh, with that, I won't speak. In great depth to any of those, uh, my approach typically, unless I'm given a different direction, is to give you everything. Uh, so you can see all the homework underneath it and then if you want to flesh it out a little bit more, you can, so what, what I did provide you though is just the. The raw data, three years' worth of cost per participant. Expenses as well as length of season as defined by the State High School League in weeks, averaged all of that and then used. At least squares regression line, which means little to me, uh, but for my statistician friends, they were able to put it in a, a scenario that helped us just try to chunk those things together. Using those two variables. So if I would draw your attention to anything, it, to be brief, it would be towards the bottom of that summary page. Where. It made sense to me to recommend three different tiers, uh, tier one would be all the sports that. Were eleven to thirteen weeks are shorter seasons and then a fourteen-week season that's kind of below that mean, so. On average, those sports cost about a hundred and eighty dollars per participant. And that's sixteen total sports, uh, would fit into that. The next tier would have an average cost per participant of about twice that as well as a fifteen to eighteen week season. And then anything above that regression line, so that would be nine total sports. And then frankly, uh, hockey is just completely on its own island, as you guys probably anticipated with the cost of the ice. Uh, that just puts them in a completely different stratosphere, they're nine times the tier one rate, so I just wanted you to be able to explain to you how we arrived at those numbers. And then. Just different price point options, just to look at the raw number, if you look at the very bottom of the sheet. Using that math, tier two being twice as expensive per participant as tier one. Tier three being nine times as expensive, if you just use those multipliers, that puts our tier three hockey kids so far. Out of bounds, it, it just wouldn't even seem fair, so, um, we just cut that multiplier in half. So there's just different examples of what the numbers could look like, wha, what I really wanted to do is, again, I wanted to use sound mathematics and have a good rationale for why. Sports might be put into a particular tier and if you wanted to stagger the price points, why would you stagger them the way that you staggered them? Instead of just picking twenty-five dollars because it sounds like a nice number, to me, didn't really have sound rationale underneath it, not that anyone suggested that, I just. I wanted to have real purpose behind it, so, um, in that first example, um. You know, if you were to raise the base fee to one sixty by ten dollars, then you would multiply the increase by two. And that would put that to one seventy for tier two sports and would put your tier three to one ninety-five and so. I don't want to gloss your eyes over any further, you've got more data than you could probably want to review those, but I know it's something you asked for and I wanted to get it in your hands in a timely fashion. So you'd have a chance to look at it.
Scott. Scott and then Lisa.
Yep, I was just gonna say that with today's announcement from the governor and the, the extended stay at home, you know, et cetera. I think we should probably see how this plays out from the governor's point of view in terms of education. Before we go too far down this road. Because anything, you know, we, we could with the best of intentions have a discussion about this tonight and seemingly come to consensus. And then, you know, who knows what, what this week is going to bring in terms of what the governor's gonna say about schools, et cetera. Just a thought, but I do appreciate the data and recognize that we will have to address this.
Yeah, and I wanted to say a very similar thing and ask a question, and that is if we were to propose a fee change for two thousand and twenty-one, what would be the timing of that decision? Cause when do, when do you open registration for fall sports? It's in August?
It's earlier. So to make sure that, uh, really by the end of May is when we would need to know, or June first. July fifteen is when a registration opens. But all of our registration systems and data is built, uh, the first week of June. We, you know, we have a lot of staff that aren't on summer hours. So we've used that end of spring, start of summer before the next school year to make any of those decisions if we wanted to make a change at all. So.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to understand that timeframe. And I'm not proposing a shift right now. I think this is good information. I do think it is responsible because it's been quite a few years since there's been a fee change to really think about making shifts so that there doesn't have to be a big jump, which there has been in the past. But, um, it's probably a good point for us to think about and digest the data a little bit. To Scott's point and Jeff's, wait and see where the governor's recommendations and directions are coming in and, and look at it very late in the, this school year.
And Brian, did I see your hand up under the corner of my eye?
Yeah, thanks, Kelsey. Uh, first of all, Trent, thanks for doing all this work. I know that you also had help from your statistician friends. But there's nothing better than a good scatter plot and a linear regression analysis. Nothing better than it. It's just the greatest thing in the world. I'm a geek. What can I tell you? So I did look at all the data, believe it or not. Um, and have you, or actually rather Lisa's, Lisa's credit, I agree with Lisa in the fact that we can look at this a little bit down the road and still make sure we get it in, in time, um, in terms of our sports for next season. I also agree with Scott in the sense that in terms of refunds or partials or whatever for this year, we can just wait and see how that plays out through the governor and what he's gonna do. One of the things I would ask Trent, I don't know if my fellow directors would agree with this, is if you're going to look at this type of fee structure, I would ask that rather than us looking to fee structure and then saying, you know, you're an athlete, oh, we need to change it. Maybe in terms of some of those either ors that you put in your summary, perhaps that becomes a graduated fee scale where it continues to go up year one, year three, year five, so that we stay ahead of the curve or get ourselves back to a little closer to where our peers within our districts are operating. So maybe we just start to ramp ourselves up slowly rather than hit them with a big number because we know our costs are going to continue to increase as time goes on. So I would think that maybe one of the things in addition, what you're doing is saying, hey, maybe this becomes a graduated scale where our ultimate goal in terms of a, a plan, a strategic plan is five years from now, here's what our fee is gonna end up being.
Okay, I did see Jeff's hand up and then we'll go to Dave.
So I think we kind of skipped over some of the items on A that are current issues and we'll just come back to those later. It got a little jumbled together with, uh, B, which is the activity fees for next year. And if you recall our last conversation, Trent had shared that he needed to know by the end of May or the very beginning of June to keep any, um, just to know what even the fees are for next year and to keep that process rolling. So Trent and I will collaborate and we will have a recommendation as an action item for you, uh, at the April twenty-second meeting. If there are things going on that impact that, um, you could certainly, um, push it off to the May meeting. And you can also, you know, let the recommendation sit. You can make a motion and modify it, whatever, but I, I really feel because Trent's on a timeline. If we, if we make it an action item and put a recommendation there, you'll take it in whatever direction you want to. But, um, it'll keep us from kicking the can down the road. So, um, that's the plan to have that. Once again, don't think that it's a, um, take it or leave it a recommendation. It's just the best that we can come up with at that time to keep the ball moving. And when we're done with B, um, um, let's see if we can come back up to A and, and just chun those items to clean those up. That would be great.
Yeah. Dave, did you have something else to say about the fees?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, when was the last time, Trent, that we changed the fees overall? How long was that?
Two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten school year.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And we do have a little bit of time, so with this could be on the twenty. Okay, thank you.
Just so, just so you know, Dave, you keep, um, being a robot. Um, all right. So we'll pop back. We'll pop back up then for the Minnesota State High School League event.
I apologize. That'd be my fault going from B to A. I didn't have the agenda in front of me, so I'll own that one. I got you out of order. So, um, yeah, the other one was just trying to stay in touch, uh, trying to, um, between Jeff and, and Mike and, and our district office, trying to continue to be thoughtful and kind of stay ahead of the game about, I know we're dealing in what ifs and there's a lot of our world that's dealing with what ifs right now. But, um, number one, I just want to applaud this group and our district office and just, uh, for their approach so far in terms of the, 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 the timely decision to, to start paying coaches and support our distance learning plan with athletes. And the way that we've gone about that, we've, we've been really innovative and creative in it. But I can say with, um, confidence and part of the national groups that I'm in, we're also, um, on the leading edge of that, which I think is really something to be proud about. Our kids are getting about as much of a robust experience as they can get in terms of trying to stay in touch with their coaches. And as we've said before, for a lot of our kids, they're the most trusted adult or strongest connection they have to our educational system is their coach and their sport and their teammates. And we're trying to do things to, to keep them connected. And it's like everything else, it's imperfect by definition right now, but, um, we've really tried to be a leader in that regard. And I, I think our coaches and athletes and families should be commended for all they've engaged in that regard. And, um, as, as you know, there's, there's plenty of discussion at every level, human resources superintendent, MSBA, AD, State High School League, how you, how you approach this particular, uh, group of employees. But I think to date, we've done the right thing by compensating these folks for what they have done and what they'll continue to do. I also want to be really sensitive to, to our families who, you know, we have over three hundred and fifty individual registrations for the spring at a hundred and fifty bucks a pop. And I just want to think ahead. You know, we're really dealing with two realities. One is that we have some type of shortened or modified in-person season. And I think of the chances of that happening are very slim to echo what Jeff said earlier. It's more likely than not that the entire in-person component of our season gets canceled at some point. And, um, I'm not the independent decision maker here, but, but I do want to advocate for a full refund for those families if and when we get to that point. And, um, of course, this is a work session format. It's, it's a discussion by nature. But, um, just trying to be really sensitive to the position that, that all of our neighbors and, and friends are in. And, and it, we, um, again, it's a moving target. But the, the temperature that I have on my peers and neighboring districts at this point is if we go full cancellation of in-person, most at this point have taken, uh, at least internally, their temperature is to, to give those full refunds back. So I just wanted to advocate for that on behalf of our families. And again, say thank you for how we've approached our coaches and the distance coaching model to date. And like all of you, I feel like in some ways, these are super long days, like the days themselves are super long. Yet the ground shifts under our feet so much that by the afternoon, it's different than what we had in, in the morning. So without knowing where we'll be in two weeks, I, I acknowledge that's a variable. But I would just appreciate thinking ahead a little bit, um, when we get to that point. And the last nugget I'll add is that so far, at least in terms of the high school, we've had less than ten families contact us and request a refund, which, uh, is much smaller than I would have thought by now. We have so far given all those families a full refund since, uh, you know, we're trying to do a modified, uh, connected engagement here. But yet they haven't technically had any in-person contact. So we've, we've just granted those and given them back. So with that, I'll, uh, I'll wrap up my comments on that one.
All right. So if I can follow up, um, with Trent's comments and then leave it open for your discussion afterwards. Obviously, we've got guidance from the Minnesota State High School League that, you know, what the status of things is right now. And we're anticipating in a week or so, we'll get the word on the final season, um, whether there'll be a modified season or not. So we can wait and react to that. And I think the timing will be good for your April twenty-second meeting that you'll have an answer before that, in case you need to take any actions. With the coaching stipends, under the master agreement, we're paying those coaching stipends. There is no language that says what happens if you have COVID nineteen. Uh, and as Trent shared, and you've got an attachment in your packet, um, there, he has demonstrated what they're doing in this distance lock learning model to continue to coach and keep those personal reactions going or interactions going with the athletes. So, um, I'm going to give you a preview as to what I think my recommendation will be for the twenty-second. Is, uh, first of all, you don't have to do anything. The coaches will get their stipends if we do nothing. The only way they won't is if the board takes an action to somehow prorate stipends because the season was canceled. Much like Grandma's Marathon or American Burkinbinder, when they've been canceled, those are massive races where when you register for them, if they can't have the race, you don't get your money back because they've already spent the money on operating the program. So we're spending the money on, on a good part of the season. So, um, right now, I think the activities, um, handbook actually works well. Those who have said within two weeks of the, um, supposed start of the season that they wanted to refund, they automatically get that refund. If the season is canceled or if they move to a shortened season and people decide that they don't want to, I would consider that a second beginning of the season and that if people ask for a refund, they, they should get their refund. What I wouldn't do is automatically send back all refunds. Because we do have expenses, because we are paying the stipends, I would leave it to be passive. Uh, or I should say active, I guess, where you actively have to request the refund. We don't automatically give it back because many families will choose to, um, just like whenever I have Burkinbinder or Marathon or something, um, canceled, I don't complain because I know that I'm keeping that organization going for the long term. Many families, I think, will just leave their, their participation fees in there and figure, yep, they have that connection with the coaches during the season. And they're okay with supporting our activities, uh, programs for the long haul. And those that ask for it can get it back. Obviously, nothing's gonna work out the way we wanted it to financially. But that most likely would be my recommendation on, um, paying the coaches stipends and how we would handle activities refunds if the season is canceled or offered in a shortened variety. So I'll close my comments.
Does anyone else have any comments? Scott?
I hadn't really thought about the active versus passive, but I think that's a good idea, Jeff. I, I think, I, I want to think about it more, but I hadn't approached it from that angle. So, uh, thank you for sharing that. I think that's, uh, that's an interesting take because there may be families that say, hey, you know what? My graduating senior had a great experience and yeah, I'll just, you know, let that flow. So.
Go ahead, Becky.
I'm just wondering, is there, if we do do this, and I, I, I like that approach too because my kid has been having a lot of fun golfing in our living room with his coaches and his teammates. But, um, just some communication out there, like you can choose to get a refund or you can choose to donate. We've been having this interaction, but just, I like the communication. So if we can just maybe, if we decide on that, just send out a communication saying you have the choice. I don't know how that, how that's worded, but so that people are not like, why'd you get refunded and I didn't? And then cause some turmoil. So.
Yeah, I think that would be good because, I mean, there may be some families that would like that back and don't even think it's an option. So aren't even asking. And, um, given, you know, the number of people losing their jobs and stuff, they may not have been families that initially qualified to have, you know, a scholarship towards, um, the sporting event. And now maybe they need that help. So. Lisa?
Um, yeah, I think the passive versus active is something interesting to think about and it'll be a, a good conversation at our April board meeting. If in fact, we have a new executive order by that time. I would like to hope, I'm just gonna express a hope that if there is no in-person season, that the distance coaching continues through the end of whatever our academic year looks like. Cause I presume if there's no in-person season, we're probably not putting the kids back in the school building either. And I just feel like, um, that, that social emotional connection to the coaches, I'd like to see that continue, even if we don't foresee a, um, an in-person season. So I'm just expressing a hope that, um, that we can consider when we have our next executive order.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, and it, it can be more than a hope because unless you choose to try to prorate the coaches stipends, I think, um, Trent can weigh in. That would be the expectation is they're getting their full stipend and they continue to do the service, which, um, becomes more and more valuable every day that we don't come together.
Uh, in short, yeah, the answer is yes. Yeah, we'd want to sustain that as long as we could. I think the only other variable would be, and we're all throwing darts here, right? But if, if the entire school year were to be closed, like the second week of May, like we're not doing any more distance teaching, I would have to ask that question. Should we continue to extend the coaching part of it? Just, just to make sure we're all in alignment there. But that's a, again, that's across that bridge when we come to it. But yeah, short answer is I'd fully support that. And I think our, our kids need it. And I think our coaches, um, are committed to staying connected with it too. So on board.
Okay. Any other thoughts? All right. And then have we covered everything in this bit? And do you have anything else to add, Trent?
I don't. I think we're great. Thank you for letting me take some of my time and, and having the audience. I appreciate it.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Trent.
Yep. All right. So then we're going to move on to the student support task force and their initial report.
Hello, everybody. All my fellow task force members are, their videos are popping up now. Come on, people, show your faces. There we go. All right. Well, thanks for having us come back here tonight. You gave us a task to do, you know, about three or four weeks ago. And, um, we started on that task, then a little thing called COVID nineteen came into the picture. So we've been a little distracted, but we have gotten some work done. So I forwarded to each of you a lottery material this afternoon. I apologize for the information dump, but it is, um, the, the team has been busy. I give credit to the various members of the sites who have been collaborating on those documents, some of those documents. And then we were able to kind of come up with a game plan as to right now with, with what we are, but I guess just preliminarily thinking, uh, for the district as well as a long-term plan. As you probably saw in the email that I sent with this that went to the task force and, um, to some others that we, we have some short-term, so to speak, fixes or right sizing that we need to do for right now. But I think the biggest task in front of us is going to be what we do with long-term planning when it comes to social emotional learning, mental health, student supports and all the rest. And so I, I think that not only was the COVID thing something that I got in the way of that, but honestly, I think planning systemically for this sort of thing is part of a much larger picture that's gonna take some time. Jen Reikl is part of this discussion too. And at some point in time, I'm, I'm hoping we will have this topic be part of a larger MTSS system discussion that we are having as a district. And so you're gonna hear tonight, a lot of acronyms, like there always is when you have the special ed director talking to you. And so MTSS, RTI, they're pretty much the same thing. MTSS is just the newest term for that. It's multi-tiered systems of support. I think as a district, while we do a lot of things really, really well, um, as, as a district, and we do a lot of things really, really well as a site, we're not always systemically in line with one another. We're, we're getting better at that. And I think that that's the discussion that would be the long-term piece. But, um, in terms of the short-term piece, if I could maybe direct your attention to the initial recommendations, I'd like to just kind of go through those from elementary down to the middle school and the high school. And, and, and there is a early childhood piece to this as well. And raise your hand at any point in time. If you guys want to stop me. I talk fast and I want other members of my team to be able to pipe in if you have site-based questions as well. But I want to remind the board because there's a few board members that weren't there in the fall when, when there was an approval to move ahead with some extra staffing. And some of the extra staffing that you approved that we didn't even fill yet, or even staffing and programs that we started haven't even yet been fully implemented or hired for yet. So I think that some of the elementary, um, supports in particular have yet to be realized because we haven't either. because we haven't either seen the solutions rooms, for example, play out for any length of time. We haven't hired for all the special ed staff, which is going to have an impact. So if you start at the top of that document, you approved us adding more staff at the elementary level and elementary resource and another FTE at the middle school level. We're hoping in the long term, that's going to prevent our social workers at the elementary level from having to case manage. They're currently having to do due process case management, which keeps them from being able to be in front of kids in a more direct way on a regular basis or interacting with families or helping out the principals or a whole number of things that social workers can do. And I think that that's going to free up their time a little bit more to help and keep the caseloads for the resource case managers in line. The solutions rooms, which came from the Responsibility Center Discipline Training that the elementary did this year. You approved us to have three FTE, one PSA at each site, to staff those solutions rooms. And those just got underway. You've approved for us to hire for a board certified behavioral analyst or a BCBA. We did some interviews in the winter. We didn't find the right fit. We actually have an interview tomorrow for fall. But if we had a full-time behavior analyst, I think that's going to, it's going to help the whole district. But I think that the lion's share of that support is probably going to be at the elementary, since the elementaries as part of our behavior committee, which is kind of a sister committee to this, have really had a lot of the student behaviors at the heart of their focus. We're continuing our contract as of right now with Karen Kess Felling for a day a week. We decided to keep that going for now. So that's where we're at with elementary, with just some of the things that you guys have already approved. I do think that we need more therapy time from like Canvas Health, Health at the, actually at all three levels. I think we need probably two more FTE district-wide for therapeutic help to be able to reduce our waiting lists that are for kids that have that tier three type of support needs. And that's actually our biggest bang or our best bang for the buck when it comes to FTE, because we can use the Safe Schools levy to pay for some of those supports if we so choose. And I think we're currently getting about three FTE for a little over, I mean, Jen might be able to tell us exactly, but I think it's right in the neighborhood of 40,000 or a little bit less for three therapists right now. So adding two more district-wide is not so bad. I'm going to stop right now after elementary before we move on to the other two, because I've been doing a lot of talking, just to be able to allow others to pipe in or just ask some questions preliminarily.
Okay, does anyone else on the, I don't know, school board members or anyone else from the task force have anything to add or questions? Lisa?
The only question I have, Dave, is Canvas Health, do they anticipate being in a situation where they can supply two more FTEs worth of therapists?
So I asked Carolyn Felty that question. She's the supervisor that I work with to provide us with the FTE. And she does admit that they have a workforce problem when it comes to being able to locate people, especially if they don't have enough time. That said, they were able to locate a replacement for us at the elementary level this year when our initial therapist resigned and we had to find a different one. And I do think that they're going to have an issue, but it shouldn't stop us from looking, I guess. And so Carolyn said, let's just proceed if that's what you want to do as a district and proceed. And we can see what we can find at that point.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, I think you're good to keep going, Dave.
All right, great. Middle school level, like I said before, you approved some resource FTE. We weren't able to fill that yet this year. So we're hoping to fill that for the fall, which will bring again, caseload sizes down. I'm hoping that that person, whoever that is, will help on the behavior side of things more at the middle school. We are again looking to take case management away from the school social worker there. That's there this year. And we actually experimented this year with splitting the social worker that was originally at the middle school for years as a 1.0 FTE, splitting that social worker across to the high school. And I think she's done a wonderful job and has worked very hard. I think she would be the first to admit, along with us, that she was maybe stretched too thin in that role. And I'm not sure that either site realized what we had hoped they would realize by having her stretched as far as what she was. And so we're looking now to return that social worker back to the previous model at the middle school so that they have that support back in the counseling office and back with the students over there to the way that it was before. And then we do think even with those changes, that the counseling office over at the middle school could use additional FTEs. So we are looking at an additional person in that counseling office, as well as, like I said before, adding some tap therapy that would probably, that therapy FTE would probably be split with the high school so that the high school would have somebody to share. Or we would, I'm not sure how we'd divvy that up yet, but that would be something that we would share. So I'll stop again after the middle school.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments, Lisa?
I'm just making full use of my two-screen moment here. I have the Spectrum of Mental Health Services slide up, which was one of the other ones that Dave sent out to us to occupy ourselves with reading this afternoon. And that's the Mental Health Supports is the title of it. And I see the structure at the middle school. We've got three counselors, and then if you, which would basically be tier one. If we make the presumption of a full-time, of the social worker back to full-time, we get near to FTE at the tier two, and then an array of supports at tier three. So are you making a recommendation at what tier level that person gets added? Or is that something that the committee is going to continue to work on?
I think.
To make a final recommendation?
I think we need to continue talking. It could be, I mean, Steve and I and Sarah met with the middle school counselors this week. I think if they were, if they were getting their, if they're getting the social worker back to the previous model, it's probably a counselor at the, I'm colorblind, is it green, at the green level? Yeah, I apologize. So it would, yeah, so it would probably be at the tier one level. And the social worker coming back would be working more in the tier two level to beef that back up.
I think, Dave, we can also mention, just looking at the social worker FTE, we really want to do more of a general ed, special ed equal split. Right now, our social workers are really at a lot of special ed FTEs. And so that would also help general ed as well.
Yeah, thank you. We're looking at doing that with all of the social workers to make that more of a 50-50 split instead of an 80-20 in favor of special ed right now, to make the social workers more nimble to be able to work in a generalized capacity. We get to do more paperwork as a result of that too, but that's our problem to deal with.
Yeah, Dave, it's pretty much always about you. You get to do more of your favorites.
Right. Well, paperwork is what we do, right? Any other questions about middle school right now?
I'm not seeing any hands up. All right, so we'll keep chugging away.
All right, so the high school in some ways is similar with the recommendation is the middle school, where we're looking at adding an FTE to the counseling office. We have some options that we've been discussing to be able to fill that role. And again, I think it's been more about what that person can do at a tier two or maybe tier one level to be able to take the load off that department and to be able to meet the student needs better. And so we are still talking about some of those options to see what would be a possibility and how that would best fit. Honestly, to be able to best represent them, I promised the counselors, I would tell them that, I think that, tell you guys that they probably would like to have more than what we're recommending here, because it's busy all around the district. But I did say very overtly in my comments to the teams and also in the surveys that we sent out, that I don't know exactly what you guys are looking for approving, but I want to be respectful of probably what would be a modest add to our budget while we're looking to fix this maybe longer term. And again, it's not like, I think someone said to me before, so I'm repeating what they said to me. It's not like going out for a bond where it's a one-time thing here. We have to come back to this group down the road to be able to say we have other recommendations. I intend for this group to be an ongoing discussion group that we continue to work within in order to best meet some of those needs. So it is a 1.0 recommendation right now to the counseling office. And then, of course, it's that shared tap therapy ad that would go between the two sites as well at the secondary level.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Dave about this? Lisa does. Questions aren't a bad thing, so. You're muted though.
I double-tapped. I'm moving my hands away from my computer. So just to be clear then, my understanding is that the alignment of what this ad looks like is for future discussion. And if I understood it correctly from a hiring timeline, because we want to be a competitive place to, we want to be in that competitive pool of hiring, we need to make a decision, at least on the 2021 year, as a board at the April meeting. And would the recommendation be more targeted at that point? I mean, here again, here to me, just looking at that mental health support spectrum, you know, the gap looks like it's a tier two, but I can appreciate that the type of work may be different at the high school level, and there needs to be a more knowledgeable group to talk about that. So that question preliminarily, and then, as always, I love to have the talk about what's the total cost and the trade-off. So I hope we get to that.
Yes, I mean, we can definitely by April 22 have the plane landed on like what type of position we would be looking for. And I can have Jen do a cost out on that the same way that she would for any other ad that we would be asking for formally at that point. What was your other question, Lisa?
I think that was both of them. I mean, I'm going to presume that the recommendation that comes through will be detailed and will have the total cost. And now I'm going to make a new point, which is I really appreciate the point that I want us as a district to just be super disciplined about this. I want this to be, you know, we had kind of a emergency response towards the beginning of our calendar year that didn't play out for a whole bunch of reasons. Now we're having a short-term response. How do we get ourselves in a more solid spot for next year? I appreciate that. And then I like the idea that this is just going to be ongoing. We're going to learn from what happened. And we're going to look at how do we roll out that tier one piece that Jen Reichel adds a lot to, in addition to you guys around staff development and social and emotional learning and all of that kind of piece. But I don't want anybody to think this is a one-time fix and we're just never going to see this group again. This is a, this is a support, in my estimation, this is a support for next year. And we can talk about the size of those. And then they're just kind of real discipline and a constant awareness about this as a need.
Yeah, I would say in a lot of ways, oh, go ahead, Mike. I didn't see you raise your hand.
That's fine. Just to reflect, what Dave had started with is that it's a little bit odd, starting with the recommendation for staffing. And on behalf of the committee, we've really tried to focus on what we went to the board with in the beginning in February and what the issues that were on our hearts. And the concern was our student needs. So within all levels, we've been looking at student need and how to best support them. We certainly have identified strengths. We've been listing our resources. We want to better articulate them. And we do believe that we have that tier one curricular piece focus that we really want to have and nail down and expand. We feel that we have a strong response to crisis team. And we really want to be that strong preventative system. So even though we know we're recommending, we know that it's timely, but it is a lot of student need behind that. There's a commitment to those tier one needs that we have, because we really feel that when we are stretched, it's the regular student, the tier one, that maybe isn't the crisis student. But some of our other students really are the ones that feel the pinch, because there aren't people there to support them as well. So this is a wide range of tiers and needs that we're looking at. And just, we really appreciate the ability to be able to talk about this openly. And we are committed to this to be long-term and part of a curricular cycle.
Okay, yeah, I really appreciate that, that you're looking at this with that lens and the broader lens there in the long-term and working with Jen on, you know, the learning aspect of it and how we can work on that support for our kiddos. So I think this is great. And to Lisa's point, I think, starting with the crisis, starting short-term and now moving into long-term, I think is a good strategy here. And so thank you for all of the work that you're doing with the task force and for taking this on and for really working to make sure our kids are safe.
Happy to help. And I know that I speak on behalf of this. I want to thank the 13 other people that are on this committee who have done a lot of input and work behind the scenes to collaborate on this in a short period of time. So they pulled together a lot of the stuff that you get to look at and read about right now. But certainly reach out if you have any questions about what we are putting in these documents. And we'd be happy to clarify for you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions before we move on to the next discussion item? All right, it looks good. So thank you so much for hopping on and filling us in on the work you're doing. And again, thank you. All right, and so Jeff, we're moving on to an update on executive order implementation. And I apologize because the facilities during school closure is in that.
Could you repeat the last thing that you just said, Kelsey? I didn't understand that.
Oh, the facilities during the school closure is part of this agenda item. And so I apologize for being moved up into activities with Trent.
Oh, okay.
Just to, this means on the third item listed under here, we don't have to talk about, because it got way forward.
Yep, okay, got it, no problem. So depending on how much time you want to spend on this, I thought in a normal world, we'd be presenting to you an update of what's changed, what stayed the same, what progress has been made since our emergency meeting and dealing with the original executive order. And of course, if it was a normal world, we wouldn't be having an executive order. So I thought best thing that we could do is give you a document where the major parts of this mission to fulfill the executive order are highlighted for you, that you can walk away from this meeting with the document, be able to answer questions from constituents, be able to ask questions of district staff based on current status of things. Because it is so unique, I think it is helpful to have it in writing for you. So and then where this is going to lead to is the next agenda items. And I will preview those, the human resources calendar you have for you. And we've tried to stay true to that human resources calendar, because we're still operating and we still have our staff. And nothing has changed in the executive order as far as deadlines for following statutory guidelines on human resources. So that should be basically intact and we're following that calendar. And here at the end, because there are many, many things in this summary that are tied to budget, we'll have Jen Subert hop on and talk about how it's impacted the budget calendar and plans for moving forward with that. And in particular, in June, when we most assuredly will have to do some type of fund transfer as the dust begins to settle on the fiscal year and the impacts of the executive orders. So I'm going to, the document is attached in Board Book. And I know that you may or may not be looking at Board Book as you try to interact with the video. So I'm going to toss it back to the chair, determine whether you want people to just read this and ask questions, if you want me to walk through it, the document, or just take questions and let people read it later. However, you would like to do that.
Does anyone have any preferences? I'm okay with a summary, but we can also just take a couple of minutes to read over it if people would like to read over it.
So maybe what I can do is.
Why don't you go with a summary? And then if there's questions, then we'll ask some questions.
We'll look at the document here and I will highlight key points. And whether you're looking at the document or not, you could still ask questions. And I could tell you, yep, it's in the document and here's what it says. Or if there's something missing from that, we'll obviously fill in those blanks for you as well. So I broke it down into, get back to the first page here, page one. All right, so this is Executive Order 2019, which is the second executive order. And that's effective till April 30. And we anticipate maybe after the holiday, getting the third executive order that applies to instruction and operation of schools. And most likely. And most likely be the one that takes us through the end of the school year, but I guess that's to be determined. So for food service, highlighted our stats there. And shared how that's evolved since it began on the 23rd. Just a reminder, not all districts are operating the same way with this. We are using an open federal summer food program. So that, that means that we have to provide a meal for any child 18 and under. And that is the federal guidelines. The state has come out and, and, and some of their documents said, you know, we really want to provide food security for those in need. That creates a little bit of confusion because it depends on what program you're using. Our program is open to everyone. And there is a, and there's also been some confusion about, well, does the number of meals have anything to do with this executive order? Because we have to pay the food service anyway. If we want to reduce any impact to the general fund and not have to transfer money to food service at the end of the fiscal year, it is by far in our best interest to, to maintain a high meal count. And as you can see with our average now being around 4,300 meals a day, being the breakfast and lunch together, that we may possibly not have to transfer any money to food service. And all of our food services engaged and they feel very high morale about participating in something that is, is beneficial. And it also allows us to get some value back out of the transportation contract. So I'll stop and see if there's any questions on food service before I go on to transportation.
Lisa.
I think this is a, a question that crosses food service with transportation. So moving forward, I think, starting today, where we have the bus aides or our bus company employees with, with limited exception on maybe really high volume days. Does that get us, I don't know, that falls within our existing bus contract? I guess is what I want to ask, or is that a, was that a shift of dollars? Is that just an opportunity? Is that just a way to, to optimize the existence of our bus contract? Help me out with what I'm trying to ask.
Yep. And I think when I, when I do the summary on transportation, I think that's going to answer your question. If it doesn't, please, just pinpoint it a little bit further. That, that's a good segue to transportation whenever we're ready to go there.
Right. Does anyone have anything else about the meal program? I am just curious. Originally, we had said, you know, that we would only do 2,000 meals a day. And I thought, I'm not sure where we had come up with the limit of 2,000, but with the average of 2150. I assume we've still not needed to turn anyone away. And is there a reason we've been able to go above that 2,000 or?
Yeah. So we, we've obviously been in a transition between food service directors and working with Michael Manning and with Jen coming back and, and getting involved when we were implementing the program. We were estimating what our supply chain would provide for meals and also what our food service staff could reasonably provide each day. And we wanted to hopefully not turn anybody away because that's the, you know, the intention of the program is that we don't turn anybody away, but we can. When we run out of supplies, we can stop serving. We're not required to go scramble and make more meals. So we were trying to dial that in. And it's been very consistent as far as being able to, to plan for how many meals to prepare. We've gone over 2,000 and we initially did that the second week because they were making some insurance meals that could be used the following day to make sure they weren't turning anybody away. And it turned out that they were making about 100 extra above the 2,000 and we were using them. And so it, it, as it got more and more efficient, it was more realistic that as long as the supplies were there that we could continue to, to meet our projected demand for each day. Then with the FCCRA and some other things happening along the way with how we're reallocating our staff, we are now able to shift effective today, all of our food service staff back into meal preparation. We've expanded what we do at the middle school. And we originally didn't use the, the transportation aids on the bus routes because we felt that our pair of professionals in our food service staff were the best ones to work out the kinks in the system, which they did very quickly. And now we're feeling that it's, it's such an efficient machine that we, we just need people and that's not diminishing who these people are. But we just need people to go undergo a quick training and then hop on the buses and deliver. So it is a way to get more value out of the transportation contract by using those aids that have been paid all along. But we didn't have a function for them. We didn't, we didn't want to have too many people standing in the way, especially when we're supposed to be spread out. And we can only have so many people in the kitchen until we kind of ergonomically redesign the kitchens and the production facilities. So right now, um, they feel very confident that we can meet our projected needs each day so far. It's been amazing how consistent it is. It's, it's gradually climbed up and then kind of plateaued out right now. And we'll have Jen jump in at the end and talk about the budget calendar and potential transfers. If we stay at this meal rate throughout the rest of the year, assuming that that happens, we're going to end up in good shape within fun too. And that's all anybody could ask for coming out the other end of this executive order is to, to have a neutral impact on any fun is amazing if, if that can happen.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Hey Jeff, I'm just kind of curious. Um, in terms of children with some type of anaphylaxis going on for food allergies, how much are you seeing in terms of special requests for food?
Jen can hop in on that one because she's been actively involved in, in getting the orders filled. And obviously Brittany, our Brittany Hirschbauer, our new food service director is, you know, working directly with Jen on getting oriented because Michael is no longer able to assist us. So we initially put out that they should contact the food service office if they have any special dietary needs. And I have seen as we've loaded the meals in the morning, I've seen the soy milk and other special things on loaded into a certain buses. So I know that they're being coordinated with who a regular participant is on the bus or who's requested it. Then they say, you know, where they live and we make sure that, and that the special dietary things end up on their route. And did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I would just say that we have received those requests and we're accommodating them as we get them. There has not been a lot of them. I'm just pulling something up because I can give you actual information, but there's probably, you know, less than 15 and we've just done our best to accommodate each one.
Thanks, Jen. I appreciate that. I was just concerned about those, um, those meals for those kids getting into their hands and how that was going. Thanks.
I, I think I saw in the summary that, that there are a few supply chain issues in that we're not, because I saw that there's been a request put in for a waiver to the nutritional meal value. So I'm presuming some days we may not have all of our supplies on hand. Is that, is that frequent, infrequent? And is that becoming more or less stable?
That hasn't happened yet. We were just looking ahead to what happens if the supply chain is disrupted. Truckers, you know, over the road truckers are coming down sick and can't, you know, fill their shifts and whatever. So the state actually put in the request, I believe, so that any, any district can adjust the nutrition requirements for a reimbursable meal because they couldn't get what they were planning for that meal and they had to go with that, we're not doing this, but we're just using example, we're throwing Pop Tarts in because Pop Tarts were available and the whole grain muffins were not. So in a pinch, we could do that to make sure that they eat, even though it doesn't meet the nutritional requirements for a reimbursable meal. And then we also heard recently that the state has lined up so that school districts can go straight to to Stillwater to Cup Foods and get a priority to get supplies before it goes out into the rest of the public because we are serving students. And so there, you know, this whole thing kind of evolves with these little nuances as they go along the way that make our greatest fears less fearful because the workarounds are developing. And, and the good thing is, and once again, well, I asked Jen to hop in. I'm not aware of any supply chain disruption so far, which I would have anticipated occasionally that could be happening. And so far, I don't believe it has.
We haven't had any shortages. We have had to run to the Hastings Creamery during the day to get more milk for that day. So we've been, we've been fine. But you know, it's, it's a work in progress each day, kind of. But so far, there's been no shortages.
Okay, that's great to hear. Any other questions about food service? Otherwise we can move into the transportation bit. All right, we'll move forward.
Okay, so transportation, um, you know, there's been some anxiety with any employment about what does this mean if we're not running all these bus routes? What does it mean for the transportation company and the Hastings Bus Company? So we don't have our own district transportation. Under the executive order, so far, it's been consistent that we need to fulfill our transportation contract. We know that some districts have tried to negotiate with their transportation providers. Some districts have indicated they're not going to pay the full contract. I don't think that's going to work well for them. Of course, we can always try to negotiate with the provider. And we have discussed some preliminary discussions with, with Hastings Bus Company just about, well, if this goes the rest of the year, where is their wiggle room? Where are the variables? In the actual contract, if we're adhering to the letter of the executive agreement, there are very few variables. One of them is being fuel use. The less fuel we use, the less likely we are to pay the fuel escalator. And in this case, with fuel prices being low, we may actually, or the contract may actually trigger reimbursement because the cost of diesel goes below the fuel escalation clause. I, I asked Terry what they're paying today and I haven't heard back from them yet. Either way, that would be favorable for the district. The whole situation is not very favorable for Hastings Bus Company because they have lost the revenue that they get from field trips and spring is a busy time for that. Activities, spring is a busy time for that. And they also do coach business, which is obviously tremendously adversely impact right now. So, so in order, you know, we are paying our contract, but we don't employ any of, you know, the transportation employees. So it's really up to Hastings Bus Company whether they retain their employees or not. We are trying to give them as many things to do. But we're obviously not running afternoon routes because we'd be using fuel and there'd be nothing, there'd be no point other than, you know, that you know, they're firing them up. We aren't running special education routes other than the ones that we need right now. But we retain opportunity to, under this contract, to use them in any creative way that we may need to. Whether it's to help with internet connectivity, whether it's to run around packets of assignments that kids need or to collect them. Or one way we've been using them is just a courier, a courier service. If there's a special need student or there's lunches that got missed because they forgot to stop somewhere, there's plenty of vehicles sitting there at the bus garage. They'll, they'll run one out and drop off the meal or drop off the work. So it's been a great partnership so far. And we're obviously using just a fraction of the service we're paying for, but we're, we're trying to keep them engaged as much as possible. And to, to bring closure to Lisa's earlier question is bus aids is one thing where we just didn't need that many people around. But as we've settled in trying to match people's skills with the best of the core mission services that we're providing, it seemed like a logical place to bring in those bus aids. Now that also provides us a lot more cushion that if we do have illness strike within any of our staff that are providing services, we can go back to shuffling people around. We can, we can have pairs delivering meals. We can have district office staff providing daycare. We can do those things, daycare, childcare. We can do those things if we have to. But right now it's, it's really settled into place where we're using people in the most logical place possible. And one of the final pieces was to transition in those bus aids. And today they all showed up as a sign. Appears like things went well. And when we do double meals tomorrow, that's going to help our food service by having another day of reimbursable meals. And we're going to fully engage the transportation to help us fill that need tomorrow. So I think that answers, completely answers Lisa's question, but if not, please refine it for me.
Does that answer it, Lisa?
Yes. Yep. That answers it. Thank you.
Okay. So then I guess, does anyone have any more questions about the transportation bit? Right, then we can move on to childcare.
Okay. And since March 23rd, we started the childcare. We did not take any district action, or I should, should say school board action at that meeting. We basically just got a consensus of the board that they want to support both the spirit, or both the letter and the spirit of the, the executive order. And of course, not knowing how it was all going to turn out. It was a leap of faith that this is what the best thing is for our community. So we have been doing tier one and tier two emergency workers and also all district employees. Right now we have a unique registration list that hit 100 today. We've been, the past week, we've been averaging about 40 students served each day and two thirds of them are in tier one. The second executive order switched from preventing us from having any preschool to now allowing it to be an option if it's for emergency workers. So on Monday, we did open that up online that if anybody went on to register and they had a preschooler, if they met our preschool age criteria, they could just go ahead and register. And same with our staff with FCCRA going into effect on April 1st. Any of our staff that have preschoolers or other school age kids up to 12, under FCCRA, they could have took a family medical leave if they didn't have childcare available for their student, even teachers who are doing distance learning could say, it's too hard to do both at the same time. I don't have childcare. I'm taking this leave. So keeping our childcare open and expanding it to preschool gives us the maximum workforce available to do all the other things that we have. So I think that's helpful. For no other reason than to do that. And if it gets one more nurse or one more truck driver or whatever out on the road, that's a service to our community as well. Childcare, although we're practicing, you know, following all the guidelines for social distancing and keeping safe in all the areas, childcare is the one where it is critical that we practice safety, that we emphasize safety. And it is also the one that can be more stressful for our staff to participate in it. So right now, this week we have shifted basically our community education staff that is not on any leave code into providing the childcare. We feel that they're the best match for that. And so, so we were into that shift right now. The, the thing that's going to be really important as we transition to any budget notes with, with, with Jen Subert coming up here is that under the executive order, we are required to provide this childcare. But during the school day, we cannot charge a fee. The board in the emergency meeting basically gave the consensus that we would not charge a fee for extended daycare or extended childcare. And it's new that we're offering the preschool. So both of those, we can charge a fee. And I will give you a preview at our April 22nd board agenda. I will put a recommendation on there to begin charging for the extended daycare, extended childcare, sorry, and the preschool. Just like we would normally do that so that there are some fees coming in. And I'm not expecting that you necessarily have to follow that. I just want to get that ball rolling so that it's clear that the board had a chance to weigh in on whether we continue to offer this and no charge or whether we collect that fee. The reason why we want to think about this is, is if we can foresee this happening for the rest of the school year and maybe on into the summer, because community education obviously runs in the summer. Fund for our community education fund is going to be strongly impacted. So the state averages that the state pays for about 15% of what it takes to, through various payments that they make to the district, they cover about 15% of what we operate in community education. 85% of it typically comes from the fees that we charge. So now we're retaining So now we're retaining community ed staff, but we're only doing it, we're only operating on fifteen percent of the revenue. So charging for those, um, options would create a little bit of revenue and it would also prepare us that if there are other ways to, um, to generate revenue, that they probably would be healthy for this. Um, right now, effective this week, we did, um, no longer schedule non-contract hourly employees. Many of those people had other assignments in the district and they were adding hours. Um, and it's also anything discretionary that we don't have a, a master agreement that requires us to, to continue to pay people. We did, um, give them notice that we're not going to add those hours, so they'll, we'll be reducing our costs a little bit. Uh, where the big dilemma is, is if we're going to use our community ed, education staff to staff childcare instead of any other group, then we're retaining those employees and we're paying them with fifteen percent of the funds. And so we will need to do a transfer in June to bring, um, Fund Four back up to a minimum of neutral. And we're recommending, or we will recommend on the twenty-second, a resolution of support that on June twenty-fifth, the board will, um, transfer whatever number is necessary to bring Fund Four back up to, um, not only neutral, but with a ten percent, um, fund balance in Fund Four, which is typically where we've budgeted them and where they've tried to, um, set their fees so that they are able to absorb the ups and downs in their own program and, and not require a transfer from the general fund. This is something that the, um, the state is allowing us to do. We can actually transfer any unencumbered funds from one fund to another under this executive order. But it has to be done by board vote and it has to be done, um, by the end of the fiscal year in June, so it'll have to happen on June twenty-second. Um, let's see if there's anything else here to highlight before we take questions. Yeah, that's a lot and childcare is the most complicated one. So what we're really asking you to think about in preparation of April twenty-second meeting is, do you, um, are you ready to resolve, to commit to keeping these community education employees um, throughout the rest of the year and to bring Fund Four back into balance? Once we're, once again, transportation should work out because we continue to receive our state aid and that's a general fund anyway. And then we believe food service should work out and maybe not need a transfer either, but community ed will absolutely need a transfer. And if we do choose to lay off community ed workers who are not mandated to stay put, it would take about three weeks to, to transition them out. We would save money for about three weeks. And then if we're assuming that we're going to run summer programs and we're also assuming that we're going to run fall programs, we'd have to re-staff again and there's no guarantee that those people will come back after we've, um, let them go. So, um, once again, the heart of that recommendation to get the ball rolling on the twenty-second will be that you do a resolution to, um, retain the community ed staff, the necessary community ed staff and to, um, make the transfer in June to bring community ed back where they're able to start operating again as soon as they're able to operate under a normal environment. So I'm going to pause there. Um, Jen Subert, also feel free to jump in on any of those things before we go into distance learning.
I do have a question. Um, just to have all of the information, three weeks is not that long of a time to be talking about saving money, especially with the detrimental effect that laying off people could have and not being able to, you know, hire them back or find someone else. How many employees would fall under this?
That's a good question. I have the list in front of me of who the hourly employees were. I'd have to, um, talk to Carrie unless for some reason Jen knows how many employees that is. I, I do want to highlight or, or clarify what the three weeks means. Because of the master agreements that we have with community ed employees, they get a two-week notice that they're being laid off. And once we made a decision, it would take about a week to get everything processed, so that's why it would take three weeks. If we could have an instant savings and we could have six or eight weeks of savings, then that might be something I think you want to consider um, a little bit more closely. With it only being about a three-week savings and the long-term detrimental impact that it could have, I, I think based on the financial position of the district and the fact that the other funds may come out in fairly good shape despite all this, um, I, I just don't think that it's good for the long-term health of community ed or the district at all to, to save three weeks. Once again, all, all of this is depending upon what the next executive order may say.
And it would be roughly about twenty-five employees.
Alright, thanks. I mean, even at six weeks, I guess my thought would be we have generated a very, the fund balance. And I feel like that fund balance is for emergency reasons, like something like a pandemic where there is a cost that we were not expecting. And so I think retaining our employees is important.
And I'll also share, the reason I'm making an emphasis of this is because it's been a very challenging week in the community ed department to go through these transitions, to have everybody taking on different roles. And there's a very high level of anxiety that they will have no budget to work with moving forward and that their programs will suffer, that they'll lose staff. And, um, I, I thought that bringing this to the board now and letting you know that on the twenty-second, we'd be looking for that show of support for them. I think that would help them tremendously and also understanding that they're, they're performing this critical role in the childcare right now under stressful conditions and having that peace of mind, um, earlier rather than later, I think would just be a tremendous asset. If that's the message you want to send when, when we get there.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to add, Lisa?
Thank you. I do think this is a very valuable service and it, at least one of the reasons that we have a fund balance is to, is to resolve this issue. And I don't think we're going to get that budget stuff sorted out till later. Um, I would expect at the presentation in April, that we'll, we'll have a sense of the, the, the scope of the transfer, the likely scope of the transfer. I, I anticipate fully supporting it. But just to understand that again, within the context of the conversations we just had about, um, likely reduction in, at income on athletics with ongoing costs and anticipating the potential for adding FTEs to our general fund. So just to, I would just expect that that's going to come. I don't need to know it today.
Yeah, so we have new flexibility to, um, to code things. So we, we can code things to special education. We can code, um, paraprofessionals delivering meals to special education. We could code it to transportation. We can, we, we have all this flexibility. What we're thinking about, um, with community education is because it's that staff, um, you know, the regular community ed staff is being potentially held intact and they're providing childcare and it's going to be at a loss to the district that we just let the community ed fund diminish. And so that we're tracking it that way, so you're seeing the true cost and not, you know, moving it around. We just let community ed go down, but you're, but potentially you'd be giving them a sign of support that we know you're going in the hole. It's not your fault. We will do a transfer in June, have that peace of mind. And but right now we're leaving it in Fund Four so that we can track the actual cost of implementing this executive order without letting any of these regular employees go.
Yep, and that's exactly how I understood it. Thank you. But again, I just, it just is, in, in April or in our documents leading up to it, we'll just have a sense of the scale.
And if we do it the way that we just described, I, I think we can give you every meeting we, or end of a, you know, Fridays or whatever you want. We can give you an update on how, how it's impacting, uh, the bottom line in Fund Four.
That's fine, but again, just for the, you know, and again, I'm very likely to support a statement that says we would anticipate in June that we will make a transfer to Fund, to Fund Four of, to ten percent above their operating budget. But I just would expect at that time, just a, just a one number. I don't need to know every week, but just to say, and this would likely be in the, and that, and this doesn't have to be in the, in the action. But just so we'd say, this would likely be in the range of a hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars, whatever the number is.
Yep, I understand that Lisa, then we'll make sure we have that.
Okay, and Brian had a question.
Nope, uh, you just, Lisa just nailed it. It was the same thing, just having some bottom line number when we, we get to that point.
Okay, anything else on childcare? Alright, then we will move on to the last bit, which is distance learning.
Okay, so this is the newest, um, part that we implemented under the executive order. So that this took place March thirtieth, and I think you already had the history that Hastings has not done e-learning before. And so to jump right into it, it would have been a tremendous shift. And fortunately, the timing of the spring break and the terms of the order provided two weeks, one week before, without the full staff and one week with the full instructional staff to prepare for this. And so the silver lining in all of this is, I, I anticipate that Hastings is going to be very well prepared for, uh, weather impacted days, just about any disruption that could come your way. They're really going to have this system down. So I guess, you know, some positives come out of this is that, uh, the inertia was definitely broken on this and, and, and now you're ready for, uh, looking at instruction in many different ways in the future. The other thing is because the tech plan was not fully implemented and there was not an organized plan for a one-to-one device across any specific grade levels. Um, it, it took some extra work here in the preparation phase to try to get, um, electronic devices issued to, to students to try to collect them from people who didn't need that and redistribute it to those that did. And to really, under pressure, find out what kind of, uh, internet coverage we have within our boundaries. And so, um, we had pretty high numbers initially for students without devices and students without internet connections. And once we started the distance learning, um, staff were doing their check-ins and, um, and finding out directly from families um, what their needs were and if we could swap any things out and, and so forth. So as of April seventh, uh, we still had a hundred eighty-four students without an electronic device and thirty-two students who's, who were living in a place that just didn't have any access to the internet. And, um, as you, as you can see, that's been, um, we're about twenty-five percent of where we had started on the first day of assessing that. And today's numbers were ninety-three and thirty, so ninety-three students still did not have a device. The elementaries have been issuing iPads this week, so that's bringing that number down. And we still have some swapping out going on, um, thanks to the efforts of the individual sites. And that thirty number without internet connection, now that's getting to be a pretty small number. Um, and we heard today in our leadership team that some of the sites may actually have, um, some uh, wifi hotspots that are available, um, to get out to kids. So we could see, anticipate that, that maybe that thirty will go down even further. And, uh, it's due to the conversations about, you know, do you have phone coverage and not internet coverage? Can you turn your phone into a hotspot and all that kind of stuff? So I would, I would like to, to, uh, predict that by April twenty-second, our, our numbers in both those categories can be very small, which is, uh, what is expected of us to provide equitable education in this distance learning format. And there are absolutely growing pains and not only the technology access, but how we do special needs instruction, how we do English learner support. And there's been, um, a lot of teamwork going on here, um, in the second week of distance learning to improve in those areas because they are not completely equitable at the start. Nobody expects it to be. We've, we've invoked the good faith clause that nothing can be perfect right at the beginning. Um, but it is our objective to keep moving until we, we reach equity in those areas. And we'll still be working on it the final days of distance learning, but we'll be, um, demonstrably closer than where we started out. Um, and now since April eighth and following that April first FCCRA implementation, which is federally required, um, since April eighth, now we've, we feel like we've got our staff matched up with their skill areas. So paraprofessionals are going to primarily be helping support instruction. Most of them were doing that already. Um, they'll continue to do that and we will retain flexibility under the executive order. We have expanded managerial rights, so literally any employee, superintendent, um, paraprofessional, whoever it is, can be assigned to do whatever we need on any given day. That probably hasn't been the most popular message going out to employee groups. But once again, there's, I don't know what parts are popular about the executive order or having to deal with, uh, pandemic. So, uh, our communication, I think, has been very consistent and very clear and, um, frequent on what the expectations are. And I think we really have crossed into a new area where, um, a lot of the loose ends are tied up. And then just on the distance learning side, um, because we are talking about closing out here with impacts on, on our funding, we anticipate that our funding should stay pretty close to what it normally is because our students that we had on the day we started distance learning are still our students. We don't lose them unless they transfer, which, um, enrollment patterns are not closed down. So students can literally enroll in a different districts, it's district if they want to. They can do open enrollment. Um, if it's available to them, they can go to a non-public school option. They can switch to PSEO. Anything that isn't prevented under any previous, uh, and ongoing statute. Um, but initially, we're not seeing big shifts anywhere in that. And we'll continue to, to draw our ADM funding for these kids if they participate. The only way we drop them is if we don't hear from them for fifteen days, if they don't participate in their check-ins for fifteen days, then we have to drop them. Um, and I haven't heard anything from neighboring districts. It's all too new. Some districts just started Monday with their distance learning. So we really haven't heard about shifting. We just know that, um, there is still some movement and families are still free to do what they want to do. We anticipate, you know, we're paying for our full instructional staff at, um, we're going to draw funding that we thought we would based on the number of students that we have and we probably won't have a shortfall in that area. So I'm going to see if there's questions on distance learning. Obviously, that's newer parts, so you're going to hear a lot more about this as it evolves and reports on how successful we're being. I want to see if you have any questions about that and then I'm going to, uh, answer over to Jen Subert just to talk about the calendar and her thoughts on all, our funding stream and what actions we may need to take in June.
Um, I have a couple of questions and I'll just ask them all together because I think they all kind of go together. So I know that we can reassign paraprofessionals, um, or anyone if we need to. And I'm wondering if, originally, I know there was a list that had gone out and we asked teachers and staff members, uh, at each site if they would be willing to essentially volunteer to reassignment to food or childcare. And is that an option we've given to paraprofessionals is one question. And then two would be if there aren't enough people who have volunteered and we're assigning people, how are we choosing who's assigned? Um, I mean, we have older workers in our district, our older workers, like less likely to be assigned than younger workers, or how is that going?
Well, right now, um, we were, in, in the early stages, we were allowing anybody to, um, inform us that they were in a high-risk category or they had anything related to COVID nineteen that, um, that they could not participate. Uh, so fortunately, um, the FCCRA has allowed us to, um, require people to document that. So it's clear that they are not participating and why, and then everybody else is available to assist us. And as we work through this process, we, we feel like this is the first week where we probably have everybody matched up their skill level to their assignment. And if we have a shortage, which is bound to happen either to, um, you know, the, the health of various staff members or any other factor related to demand, is we could still assign people to help out. This week, we've been asking for people, and I know it's tricky when we say volunteer because they're getting paid, so they're not volunteers. But people have, I guess, opted in to help wherever there's a shortage. And, you know, Jen and Deanna and Jenny, all, all kinds of people have been working on refining this and communicating with staff. And so right now, this week, we have, uh, people doing what they're assigned or helping out if there's a shortage based on their willingness to help because they want to break, they want to do something more active, whatever. Um, but this is as organized as it has been. And I think, um, further organized than we would have even dreamt when we had that emergency meeting about how this would all come together. So that's just some general comments. Was there anything they didn't cover in your question, Kelsey?
No, I guess, um, no, the only reason I had brought up age is just because we know that, um, I mean, even if you're not necessarily in the highest risk group. that the risk of death increases by age pretty significantly if you do contract the illness and so.
And that's why we're relying on FCCRA. We have no choice but to follow that guideline. And so people need to use that as a tool to to remove themselves from things that may be dangerous to them. Otherwise, obviously, people can say, I prefer not to do something and give a reason why they prefer not to. But that that creates very difficult supervisor and employee relationships when when, you know, we're working that conversation back and forth and we don't have firm footing underneath us. Because we're trying to match employees up with their skill level, if they're able to do their job description, which they do during the regular year, we aren't putting them in a position where it's much different than, you know, where they have to do more lifting or more be on their feet more or anything like that. Yes, it's true that somebody may have a higher risk of exposure because of some other factor. They need to use FCCRA to address that. We're not in a position to make those individual decisions. And we, nobody fully understands truly who's at risk with anything. So we're trying to use those safe, those safety guidelines in everything we do, including the office work at the district office. I mean, we're, we're trying to implement everything we can to keep people safe in those type of settings as well. The the bus aides that hopped on for the first time today to deliver food, they got a training on how we're doing this safety. It's like, you know, it's it's like a scene out of a movie as far as here, put on your gloves here. You know, they're single-use gloves. Here, here a mask if you want to wear them. You know, here's how we're organizing the food on the bus for minimum, you know, for maximum distancing and all that kind of stuff. So there isn't really an answer to your to your question, other than we we've emphasized from the very beginning. Employees need to talk to their supervisor. They need to share what their concerns are. And then the supervisor will work with the rest of the district leadership to help find the answer. This had, this FCCRA is, once again, it's one of those rare occasions where more regulation from the federal government is actually helping us because it was hard to have those conversations when there was not solid, solid footing underneath it. And they're much easier now. Doesn't make them easy, but they're much easier now.
And I'll just add, now that we kind of have everybody assigned to their roles, like for tomorrow, we were looking for extra people to go on the buses. We put that out kind of on that volunteer basis, so the people that feel they're equipped to be able to do that are able to sign up for it. Based on that FF CRA, you know, just being age 65 doesn't qualify them as high risk. So we've been just really careful just to follow those guidelines. If they have another underlying health condition, they qualify and we haven't questioned any of them. Anything that comes in, we've just processed and moved on so people can work remotely. But we would not assign them to any other duty.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions regarding this piece? Lisa?
One, as a former federal employee, I'm just going to take that little jibe about the helpfulness of the federal government personally. But my question leads back to the to the summary that you were giving on distance learning. And that is, do we have a sense of what our, what our attendance is? I I know some people that are teachers and I think they're expressing a range of frustrations and it probably depends on their, where they teach and the and the type of classes. But just in some cases, the lack of engagement and what that may or may not result in in terms of what looks like attendance and our ability to document that the students are at least checking in. So I I guess it's an attendance question, is it? Are we seeing differences in those numbers? Are we being successful in at least counting our kids?
So we're having daily, and I see Jen Reichel is on on this too, so she wants to jump in here, she sure can. We're having daily leadership team check-ins as well as all the different department and and site check-ins. And that emphasis that first week was all about making connections with the kids to see, are they out there? Do we know how they're doing? And if we aren't having any connection, how do we follow up? Because while our instructional staff is trying to do that, we also have our support staff who's not doing instruction, who's trying to reach out to those kids. And it is not an emergency at the beginning here to establish where everybody is. But by the time we get into the fourth week, we could be required to drop kids and not get funding for them. And is it because, you know, the world's been turned upside down, so they're just not going to participate? Or they didn't tell anybody they didn't have the technology? Or their parents are are not supervising them, so they're doing some other activity instead? You know, we actually can't even process truancy if we know that there's neglect or an intent not to participate. We we would use that very sparingly, but all all the tools we had before are still there. They're just in a different world right now. And I see Jen's there, so she wants to give you some feedback on what kind of numbers we're seeing for connection with kids right now. And obviously, as this goes on a little bit longer, those numbers are going to be more and more meaningful about what percentage of the kids are actually connecting with us.
Yeah, there are just a couple of things that I'd want to share about our distance learning plan before I address the attendance. First, while we were on spring break, I want to publicly thank a host of teachers. I reached out to the staff who had worked on our e-learning plan and said, hey, guys, I know you're on spring break. We have to develop this plan and I'm wondering if any of you are willing to join us in a Zoom and work on this plan together. Every single teacher that I reached out to joined me in working on the distance learning plan. And many of them had palm trees and oceans in the background and they gave up time on their spring break in order to be committed to this district. So I just want to give a huge shout out to the staff that we have on hand who are doing amazing work. Specifically related to attendance, Lisa, we put in some guidelines as far as how we wanted to code attendance. The commissioner has been very clear that attendance doesn't need to be counted like it does when we are in school. But it can be like Dr. Pesca said, a one-time-a-day attendance. And so our elementary teachers are putting out a question on CSO. And if a kiddo interacts with that question, they're in attendance. Our middle school is doing the same thing in their advisory class, that they're putting out a daily question just to check in. And if a kiddo checks in, then they're attending for the day. Our high school, because we don't have that one-size-fits-all advisory or classroom, they have changed their schedule to be a block schedule, so they're running hours one through four on day A and then five through six and then office hours on day B. And so hours one and five are doing that daily check-in question. So Lisa, I think your question is less about attendance and more around engagement with content. And we're finding that, especially as we're delivering devices. I'm hoping that you all know that we were intentional about delivering devices to our secondary kiddos first. And so in that first week that we had, when they were coming back from spring break and they were building the entire plan and, you know, wrapping their heads around everything. They were also, they, every family got a phone call home directly from a teacher. And then in that conversation, it was a check-in and it was also, what do you have as far as devices? So we're working off of that document. All of our secondary kids should be served as far as their devices and their internet hotspots. Then we looked at elementary as the second wave. We weren't ready, and I know that Missy, I have her on text right now, so I want to make sure that I'm articulating that accurately. We weren't ready to send iPads out during that second week of planning because we've never thought about sending devices home. Thankfully, as part of our achievement and integration, we were ready to send some devices home at the secondary level. So we needed to, in order to be mindful of the requirements for E-Rate, make sure that the devices that we sent home have that security protections. And our iPads have it within the system, but they weren't ready to do that for at-home use. So there was a lot of behind-the-scenes work with our tech folks to make sure that we could get all those permissions and, you know, work those systems. And so it was this week that kiddos at the elementary level were able to get iPads. We started with that wave one of any family that said we have no device at home at all. And those have been prepackaged, they're tagged and ready for pickup. And so part of the numbers that Dr. Pesca gave to you about students who don't have access or connectivity, part of it is that that they may not have come in to grab their device yet. So we have that list. There's a second tier of families at the elementary level who have articulated, hey, we have a device, but we don't have an iPad. And kiddos at the elementary are used to that connection with an iPad. They know how to get into the school-ready apps, do CSO from iPads. So that's the second wave that we will consider after we make sure that all of those people who didn't have devices at all will get access. So it's because of those tech issues that we can't accurately say elementary is having this sort of response. But we're building into our system, hey, we want to make sure that we're checking in with kids and families. I talked a lot, sorry, Scott, I see your hand up.
For those families that we may have a package ready for them to go, but they haven't come in to pick it up. Do we have options to either utilize the Hastings Bus Company or otherwise deliver the, I mean, honestly, if there's 10 families that don't have these and we don't have another way, let me know, I'll I'll do it myself. I mean, let's get these, I I can't go in and set it up for them, but at least it can be on their doorstep.
I think our elementary principals are in that same boat. They're ready to go drive out to whomever they need to. And it's just a matter of, you know, we needed to be here in order to deliver these devices. And then phone calls will happen to find out, are you still in need of a device? Because some of our families, when asked that question, they articulated they needed the device. And in the meantime, they may have found something. So it may be that we've packaged something to be ready for those families and they've already found a solution.
Jen, have we followed up with those families to ensure that they have either found a solution or that, hey, I know you guys requested this, do you need to deliver? Have we followed up with them to see what the holdup may be?
So because the device delivery has happened just in the last two days this week, the time was allocated to, we're going to get these ready and we're going to get them out. And then the next step, Brian, is to make sure that we're reaching out to those families. We have communicated via email, but we know that that's not always the best form of communication. It may be the most efficient. And so we're trying to, you know, begin with that and then absolutely we're following up with phone calls. At the same time, today was the designated day that all of our elementary teachers, instead of adding new content to CSO, they made personal phone calls home to every single family. And so in there, we may find from some of those families, hey, before I said I needed a device, but now I don't really need a device. And they've been curating their comments in a spreadsheet and our elementary principals are doing a fantastic job of just making sure that things are working smoothly. Rather than having staff meetings, for example, they're meeting with every grade level team once a week just to check in and say, how's this distance learning thing going? How are you doing? What is the level of engagement with kids? They're like, they have their fingers on the pulse of what's happening out there.
To go back to Lisa's question, I think you did a great job explaining kind of how attendance is taken. But I think what Lisa was wondering is when you're taking that attendance, what actual percentage of our students are answering that question to be marked as attended?
I don't have access to that spreadsheet. That is something that building principals, along with at the secondary level with the APs and the counselors, the teachers have been asked as part of our attendance plan, if you don't hear from a kiddo within two days, you gotta let somebody know. So we're asking teachers not only to reach out to that family, but then follow up to say to an assistant principal and a counselor, I haven't seen this kid. They may need an additional point of contact at home because we know that there are some kids who because they don't have the connectivity that other kids do, they may be sharing bandwidth at home on their limited hotspot or their phones. So we're really trying to be mindful of what are the expectations. And especially, you know, during the contract day for a teacher, it may not be the time that kids are available to do their work because they have other things going on. So they may mark attendance up until 3:30, but then a kiddo may engage in evening hours. And then teachers are going back the next day to revise that attendance. So we have these systems in place, but I have not seen the data, so I can't talk about what percentage of our kids are attending. I can report that the teachers who serve on my distance learning team, we've been checking in every few days. And they are being, they're so stinking excited about seeing kids faces and working with them, particularly at the high school level. They're doing some synchronous classes, you know, via Zoom or within Schoology, and they're seeing a high percentage of kids interacting. Those are our most tech-savvy teachers, tend to be, the ones on my team tend to have those higher-level classes where they may have the crop of students who are more engaged in education than, you know, some of our non-AP college in the schools type classes. But that's one of those pieces that as we meet as a leadership team, the next week we'll look back at what is that general attendance that's happening and look systemically, are there things that one level is doing in order to increase that engagement that another level needs to learn from?
Thank you. Just a note, Becky Beisel got booted. And so she's, she's been texting me a whole bunch to try to get back in out of the waiting room. I don't know if Becky can get her in here, but thank you for all of those answers, Jen. I appreciate the detail you always give. Does anyone else have any questions for Jen? Uh, Brian?
Jen, I'm sorry for the follow-up. Real quick, I do know that there's kids out there that for whatever reason, let's say their plans just work differently. There's only so much bandwidth and then they get cut off. Or the cell phone company cuts it back significantly. Now, I know that at some point, I can't remember where I saw the note that we were trying to source more hotspots. Is that still an issue or have we managed to accommodate everyone that needed hotspots?
So as far as the purchasing of hotspots, Missy checked in with the company that we are working with to purchase Kajit. They are backordered until July, so we can't order them. But we have connected with just about every family to look at what are the other alternatives? Coupled with that, so I think we have a firm belief that just about every secondary kid has access to some sort of internet in order to allow them to engage somehow. The second piece of that is really working with our staff to be mindful and reminding them of the equitable distance learning experience that the commissioner continues to to say again and again, that equitable piece. And while a synchronous learning environment, when when kids and teachers are interacting in real-time is mimics what we know and we feel most comfortable with, we know that there are kids who, for whatever circumstance, are not able to engage in a synchronous way. And so we're really encouraging staff to think about what can you do or what are you doing to make sure that your expectations allow for an equitable distance learning experience? And so if there is a synchronous, how are they then coming around the other side and making sure that kids can engage in an asynchronous way that invites less bandwidth? A Zoom call, for example, takes a lot of bandwidth. You've got video, you've got audio, that live streaming. But when you watch a video, that is a short video, that takes less bandwidth. And and I think our teachers are really looking at, how do I do my content justice? Because they want to make sure the kids are continuing to learn, because that's like why they're drawn into education. And at the same time, we're continuing to share the message. We're looking for 40 to 60% of what's typical content. We can't expect 100%. And, you know, think about, how do you chunk that out? And in a couple of videos that I've sent to staff, I really ask them to think about prioritizing relationships and self-care, and then content is secondary, which is weird coming from a director of teaching and learning to say, you know, back up on the standards and don't worry so much about the content. And at the same time, we're in weird times that need to have that message and that permission, overt permission for teachers to take a step back and say, all right, if nothing else happens, what do kids need to have access to to build a foundation that helps them be ready for next year and weed out all the other stuff? So I, we're, we're still working the process.
Okay, Lisa?
Two things. One is a loop back to Brian's question about reaching out to the families that haven't picked up the iPads while we were sitting here. The computer lab specialist at McCullough sent me a text. She has my my phone number because I sub for her occasionally. And she said she spent the day today handing out, passing out And she said she spent the day today handing out, passing out iPads to the families that came in. And that tomorrow morning, her plan is to make phone calls to the thirty families that did not pick them up within the last two days, confirm if they're still in need and then figure out how to get them out. So it matches Jen's reply exactly, which is the last two days have been about getting the supplies out. And, and there's a actual staff member that's going to be in charge of making those calls, not just, not just curating them back out of the elementary school calls. Which actually leads me to a second wondering, more than anything else. And that is, I really made me happy, Jen, to hear that elementary teachers made a point of reaching back out to families and touching base. Because it really meant a lot to me at the high school level, when the, when the teacher, first hour teacher called and said, hey, what's up? What do you need? And I wonder if there's a intent or sometimes set aside at the middle school or high school level to do the same thing. And it's not about, do you need a device or do you not need a device? Or do you understand how to get into Schoology? But I think one of the most critical questions we were asked is, do you have need to be contacted very shortly by a counselor or a nurse or a, a support staff person? I'm just wondering if there's a, something like that in the works.
I think that at our secondary level, um, the teachers are working to make those connections with kids first. And that families for them come second. And at the same time, we have been talking about, how do we loop in the families? Because we know that we are leaning on those parents and guardians to be the eyes and ears of what we usually see in our classrooms. We're not asking for our parents to be the teachers, because we have teachers who are doing their due diligence to create lessons. And at the same time, those parents are the ones who are getting their kids out of bed and reminding them, you gotta go on Schoology or you gotta get on seesaw. And it's, it's that relationship and that partnership that's going to serve us well in the long term. And we're a work in progress there. But that's a message that, that in our leadership team, we could keep talking about. As far as, all right, what are next steps and how do we build that in? And I think, you know, our, um, our teachers like content at the secondary level. And it's, it's not familiar territory to really reach out to parents on a pretty consistent basis. You know, just to have a chat. And sometimes that's what's needed.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's needed or not. And in fact, it reminds me that that is actually one of the hardest things for me about having a high schooler is that it's really their relationship with the school and their relationship with teachers. And, you know, maybe I get to hear about it a little bit, maybe I don't, you know, that's, that is part of their moving up and taking personal responsibility. But, you know, just, just I guess share that I had expressed that. And maybe it's not about the kid, but it's about just the school asking, is there anything that we need? Is there anything we need as a family?
And I think teachers really are in those tech in questions, making sure that they're not academic. They're asking, you know, how's your, is your planning going? Um, I know our, in our avid class, the check ins have been, how's your schedule look? Like, how are you making time to do the things that you need to do? What's working in distance learning and what's not working? So they are inviting those more personal pieces and not, you know, take this math question and your answer is, you know, your attendance question.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you for all of your work on this. I know this is not easy. And we had prepared for maybe having, you know, one or two super cold days or snow days. And this is just a new adventure for all of us. And you've really done a great job. So thank you.
The teachers have done an outstanding job, really. The, the team, I can't say enough about how important that team has been to be the liaisons between the big picture planning and the reality of what it takes to implement it. They've done a ton of professional development. They're on call for PD for their colleagues. They're just, we work with amazing staff. We really do. And I'm so fortunate to have members on my team who are willing to go the extra mile. So kudos to them.
Yep, absolutely. That was a collective you, um, just you as the district. And you've all done great. So thank you. Okay, so then the next item for our discussion is the human resources calendar and adaptations to the FCCRA.
Yep. So we have let you, um, we have attached our document informing staff about how we're applying FCCRA. And we already talked about the human resources calendar is basically going to continue on its timeline. So really, I think the only remaining thing on our agenda is, um, just to get an update on how this pandemic has impacted our budget calendar and thrown it slightly off and, and how we plan to move forward. And then just any insights from Jen Stubert on that document that I provided for you with some, um, I guess advanced notice on recommendations you're likely to, to hear on April twenty second after we probably had a new executive order to keep the ball rolling and how we need to adapt to budget impacts. So maybe we'll hear from Jen if she's still there.
I wanted to start with this current year's budget. I think you guys have already heard some of the information, but there's going to be a lot of things that are happening related to COVID nineteen that are gonna, that's gonna affect our current year financial position. So some of the things that we've already talked about, you know, refunding sports participation fees. We've, Jeff and I have been contacted about refunding parking fees. You know, all of that's going to play into kind of where we end the year. Reduced earnings on investments. I mean, I think everybody knows the investment rates are very low. Rental income, so like our facility rental, you know, we're not renting out our facilities at this point, so we're not making money on that. Community ad, again, you know, just keep saying it, they're going to be one of our biggest areas that are hit by this because they're not bringing in their typical program fees. There is a potential possibly for some funding related to COVID nineteen. Um, I know there's some proposals out there. Nothing has been formalized or approved at this point that I know of. But, you know, there's a possibility at some point that we would get some revenue related to that. Um, so those items were kind of on the expenditure side, or I'm sorry, on the revenue side. If we look at the expenditure side, you know, there's some areas that will have lower expenses and there's some areas that will have higher. So, you know, I'm kind of looking, you know, substitute costs, we're not going to have those expenses. But we'll have other expenses, you know, like higher expenses. I'm thinking on our insurance, if, you know, something happens to one of our employees related to COVID. Um, unemployment, you know, we're receiving unemployment papers every day. I think, you know, employees are concerned and worried, so they're starting that process just in case. Some, you know, areas that we might save money, you know, reduce transportation costs and the athletic side of things. Dr. Pesca already kind of mentioned that we're not obligated to pay those expenses, so we'll have some savings there. Additional expenses related to professional development. I know we're, you know, looking at some online resources, increased cost of technology. We're buying additional hotspots. There's just a huge list of them. I'm just kind of trying to give you an idea that, you know, as we get to the, as each month goes on, we're going to have a moving target. You know, we've talked a little bit about the transfer to community ad, and I really think that we're going to need to do that. And that's something that we're really looking for the board to support. Because although it's a directive that we provide that emergency childcare, it doesn't have to be done by community ad. It's just that right now, that's where we feel we have the staff that can provide that care, that they don't have another assignment. So we talked in the beginning a little bit about how peros were being used originally. We used secretaries, we use district office staff, we use all kinds of people. But we're really trying to get back to having the, the right people in the right places. So that's just kind of an update on this current year, some things to be thinking about. And I'll kind of keep giving updates as more information becomes available. Um, as we look at next year's budget timeline, for the most part, things are pretty much on schedule. There's a few things left from March that will get wrapped up here in April. Um, but then we should be back on schedule for the most part. I will plan to have an estimate available for you guys on what the emergency childcare cost, you know, ballpark, at least what we're thinking that's going to be for the April meeting. And then in June, we'll have that transfer, if that's something that you guys support. And then we'll also have the adopted bud, budget in June.
Okay, do you have any questions for Jen? Lisa?
For the adapted budget, um, do you, two questions. Do you anticipate that we'll have a finance committee meeting prior to the adapted budget coming to the board? And then, and I don't expect an answer on this today, but given it, given some of the additional costs, like the student support staffing and, and what we know about contracts, are we still looking at basically neutral? You know, I'd like to have a sense of if we're basically a neutral budget or we anticipate a little bit of deficit budgeting or maybe even a, a positive. So just a sense of that maybe in April and then is there going to be a finance committee meeting?
And I would recommend that we do a finance committee meeting. We haven't done one yet with the new board. Jeff and I have talked about it, um, because, you know, there were some other things brought up to the board before this COVID nineteen that we don't know if we really wrapped up yet. So I would, I would support definitely having a finance committee meeting.
I see Brian nodding and I certainly would like one too. I think just getting us together as a group. And just again, getting that discipline of getting back in the practice. I, I feel too like maybe there's some questions that I've lost track of from a couple of months ago.
Yeah. All right. And then I will follow up with Becky to see if she can work on getting that scheduled. I don't think she's on this call right now. So.
I think, I think Becky is, but we'll follow up on that tomorrow. And then one of the things I think Jen was alluding to and maybe Lisa was too, the whole idea of the safety money and how we use that was just left on the table when all of a sudden this issue came up. And those are some pretty big decisions on next year's budget, unresolved thing. So we'll get those all queued up for whenever that meeting takes place.
All right, that sounds good. All right, anything else? Brian?
Hey, one quick note, um, and I, I think, I don't, this is not something requires a vote or anything. But Jeff, if you could, um, if you get a chance, drop a note out to the group of people or Jen that have worked so hard, these teachers, I'm getting scuttled, but there are teachers trying to schedule meetings on Good Friday, on, on Easter Monday. And I really think that these teachers have killed themselves here of late. And they really need to take that time to refresh and regenerate. And I, I get the sense they almost feel like they can't, um, not because of anything anybody's done wrong. But if a note came from the district just saying, hey, look, we really want you to take these four days off and recharge your batteries, I think it would go a long way.
Yeah, Brian, um, I was just reading the, the chat there. So Becky, if you're out there, Becky Garcia, um, if you're out there, respond somehow. Otherwise, um, we're not sure where you're at right now. I'll give her a phone call up when we're done with the meeting if, if I need to. But to follow up on Brian's point, one of the things under this executive order is your school board approved calendar for the year is locked in. So when we have a holiday on Friday and Monday, that's a holiday. And we'll reinforce that, that, hey, everybody, this is a holiday. May eighth is a professional development day. We don't have a choice, but to keep that, even though it seems like odd, like, why are you going to do that when all this is going on? Because that was the calendar, we will maintain our funding um, for the year by following our approved calendar all the way through until this is, until this is over. So it's a good point and we can reinforce that as a, um, as a thank you for their efforts this week to remind them that Friday and Monday are off, there's no obligation. The kids are, the kids are unhooking, unplugging, and that's a good thing. And they can enjoy the holiday. And it looks like Jen Reichel posted that she's going to talk about getting that message out.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? Anything we didn't cover that we should cover? Whereas I think this is our fastest work session in a few months. It's only three hours. Well, you know what? If we take out the special meeting, it's like two and a half.
It's all that drive time that we all saved, right?
Yeah, that's absolutely. Okay. Well, then that sounds good. And thank you, everyone, for.
Hey, just, just one, just one thing. I saw the note come out that they were looking for volunteers. So I went out to the signup genius and I just want to give props to Lisa to, to this one right here, because I saw her name on the signup list, because I was checking it out too. So way to go.
Judy wasn't going to let you go anywhere.
We've discussed safety measures.
Or did I just let the cat out of the bag? I'm sorry.
Upstairs listening to this meeting and I'm going grocery shopping.
But I, I thought that was awesome. I, I was, that, that's great. That's great. I think we can all, you know, that shows that we're all trying to do our part. So, and, and help however we can. So awesome.
Yeah, it feels like a little thing, but yeah.
Well, it's not a little thing to the people coming in to get, to get those lunches and those breakfasts. That's for sure. So awesome.
Okay. All right. Well, then that sounds good. So guess at eight fifty-one, we will call the meeting adjourned.
Need a motion, you can just do it.
Well, we never do.
I don't think we.
Oh yeah, that's right.
But our next meeting, we've mentioned it like a million times on this call, April twenty second, so. Yeah. All right, everyone.
All right.
Socially distant.
Yep, stay well.
All right.
All right, be well, everyone. Good night.